Recording and we will come to order. Sharon, can you call the roll please?
Councilmember Wenger.
Here.
Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Here.
Mayor Alf.
Here. Okay, thank you. We will begin with oral communications. If you want to address the council on a subject not on tonight's agenda, you may do so now. Before I take any comments, I just want to remind folks of our public meeting decorum policy. We passed this earlier this year. And these rules are set up to allow everyone to be heard without fear of being discouraged from participating. So we ask that you address the council by announcing your name and address. The address is optional. Please do not make slanderous, impertinent, or profane remarks. Do not interrupt other speakers. Avoid whistles, yells, or other disruptive behavior. And again, please, just, just, we ask that you treat the council and your fellow citizens with respect. Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda? Margaret, you have your hand up. Do you want to, is this about something not on the agenda?
Maybe having trouble with her audio. I don't know if she can use the chat or some other way of.
Yeah. Margaret, if you can hear us, please use the chat feature to type your question and we'll, we will read it. Thank you. Okay, we will, we'll try to resolve that. And in the meantime, we'll move on to our first item. So, welcome everyone to our first annual Nebraska natives' recognition evening. Where, where a mayor born in Nebraska honors two, two members of our community who are leaving but are also born in Nebraska. Tim was born in Omaha. Lou was born in Lincoln, and I was also born in Lincoln. So. I was kind of amused to read that as I was, see that as I was going over the proclamations.
It'll never happen here.
Yeah. So, I'll, I, I, it's, it's, it's always fun to start meetings off like this, but it's also a little poignant because we are saying a fond farewell of sorts to two people who, for me, have made Portola Valley something more of a community. I'm going to start with Tim. I have known Tim for several years as a, interacting with him through the council and our town government, but I got to know him a little better and differently in the last couple of years when my wife started teaching at the priory and my daughter became a student there. And many of you know Tim as the face of Woodside Priory School. If you're there and you see him on campus, you will see the, the genuine joy he takes or took in that position and, and his absolute love and dedication to the school, something that I, I know I will miss and a lot of people will miss. And your successor has some big shoes to fill here. I will provide some more details from the proclamation itself. Proclamation of the mayor honoring Tim Mollick on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas, Tim Mollick was born in Omaha, Nebraska. Tim earned a BA in social studies and history from Christian Brother University, an MA in religious education at St. Mary's University, and then MA in educational administration from St. Thomas University. And whereas, Tim was the first recipient of the David Bremser Memorial Award as an outstanding eighth grade America Award. And in high school, Tim was senior class president, treasurer of the Letterman's Club, and voted prom king. And whereas, Tim has volunteered as Rebuilding Together captain for 28 years, served on the Board of Trustees for the Peninsula Bridge Program from 2010 to 2019, and serves as a North American Commissioner for the International Commission of Benedictine Education. And whereas, Tim began his service with the Woodside Priory School in 1989 as dean of students, teaching social studies, world history, and theology. Tim was appointed interim head of school in 1996 and head of school in 1997. After serving the priory community for 30 years, Tim announced his plans to retire at the end of the 2019-2020 academic year. And whereas, Tim's passionate leadership has been instrumental in the development of Woodside Priory School. Tim has continued to cultivate an exceptional environment for both learning and teaching. His calm nature, thoughtful manner, and welcoming smile will continue to resonate within the school, and his vision and dedication are evident everywhere. Whereas, it is our hope that you can now visit family in the Midwest and wake up each morning having the freedom to do whatever it is you desire. And as Tim would say, listen with the ear of your heart. Now therefore, I, Jeff Alf, mayor of the town of Portola Valley, on behalf of the council, staff, volunteers, and residents of the town of Portola Valley, convey our heartiest thanks and congratulations to Tim Mollick on his retirement. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Portola Valley to be affixed here too, this 22nd day of July 2020. Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you very much, Jeff. And, you know, I just have to say, go Big Red.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Just a little bit of that. Thank you, guys. It was a wonderful, loved being in Portola Valley, loved everything the priory meant to the community. Community and the ways that you guys have helped us foster our growth, you know, whether it's housing or whether it's academic buildings. It's been a wonderful experience for me and for, for the monastic community there who, again, started in 1956. So, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, council members. And I am very honored to be included with Lou tonight. This is my special part. I think this is, Lou and I go way back. So, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. We, we will miss you. And good luck wherever you're heading next. So, take care.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is another proclamation. We are honoring Lou Hess, our local UPS driver. I, I, I moved here in 2006. I, the day we moved into our house, my neighbor Tom Ramies came to my door and invited me to this evening movie night. And I was there for about half an hour and I started talking to this guy named Lou. And he was just talking about how he knew everyone in the neighborhood. And I said, oh, so where do you live? And he said, oh, I don't live here. I'm the UPS driver. I, I, I had no idea how intimately I would get to know Lou over the coming years. As I, you know, would yell at him down the street where my, where my next package was and how he would, you know, we'd constantly joke about how he was enjoying, you know, my, my flatware, my luggage, whatever it was that I was waiting for. And it's just been, it's been so great on the, on the occasions when I've had the chance to see you, Lou, at the door. And sometimes I would hear a knock at the door about six o'clock and it'd be dark out and I'd open the door, grab the package, say thank you, and hear Lou saying, you're welcome, off somewhere in the darkness. I, I, I've had the pleasure of meeting your son and I, we will miss you, but I look, I wish you all the best in your retirement. And I know that you will enjoy spending the time with your son. So, I will read your proclamation here as well. Proclamation of the mayor honoring Lou Hess on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas, beloved UPS driver Lou Hess has delivered the sad news that his last day of work in the town of Portola Valley is Friday, July 31, 2020. And whereas, Lou was born in Lincoln, Nebraska, moved to the Bay Area as an infant, and has never looked back. And whereas, in the fall of 1984, Lou delivered his first parcel to the former Stanford Music Research Center on a Roster Arrow. And whereas, while grinding the gears of his first delivery truck, a beat-up 1968 Chevy, then resident Tennessee Ernie Ford opens his front door and yells, use the clutch, son, use the clutch! Whereas, Lou had to problem solve, like the time he was told not to leave packages on the front porch because the free-roaming goat eats them. Whereas, in his 35 years of working in Portola Valley, Lou has made many lifelong friends that will remain long after he completes his final route. And whereas, Lou has brought much heart to the town, furthering that small-town feel we all value, and made it a better place for all to live, work, and play. And whereas, the greatest gift of retirement for Lou is spending more time with his son Lucas. And now therefore, I, Jeff Alf, mayor of the town of Portola Valley, on behalf of the council, staff, volunteers, and people of the town of Portola Valley, convey our most heartfelt congratulations on his retirement and sincere thanks on achieving the milestone of providing 35 years of exceptional service to the town and its residents. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Portola Valley to be affixed here too, this 22nd day of July 2020. Congratulations, Lou.
Woo-hoo, Lou! Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, thank you. I really cannot thank you enough for this. The only complaint I would have is that making me follow Tim. Because that is one heck of an act to follow. Fortunately, I know both you, Mr. Mayor, and Tim fairly well and have been happy to know both of you for such a long time. And I cannot even express my gratitude and how kind everybody's been to me in my 35 years at UPS in Portola Valley. All the stories and the kids, the adults, the dogs. It's just been incredible. When you call it work, I don't know if I can call it work. It was more of where I grew up and where people cared for me and I cared for them. And can't say enough about my having been in Portola Valley as more of a social party, like being at a party all day long and socializing and getting a workout. So, thank you for everything, everyone. I just can't thank you all enough, the town of Portola Valley, the residents, and all my friends that I've met. It's been incredible. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lou. And I'm guessing maybe you don't want to turn your camera on because there's a child crawling all over you and I just can't.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I tried to join the Zoom meeting on my, on my laptop, but I couldn't seem to do it. So, I'm on my laptop. Let's see. Oh, here, maybe I can do it now.
Give it a try. I just want to see you one more time. There you are. There you are. Okay.
I haven't had to log on to a Zoom meeting because I've been outside talking to people personally, so.
I can, I can, I can see that. Yeah, I can understand. Okay.
He's wearing his uniform.
I did. I kept it on, just so that I could, you know, have it on.
Great, thank you. Yes, alright. Mayor, if I could, there are two comments in the chat. I'll just read them out loud for Lou. Leslie Field applause. And from Dana Breen, we are going to miss you so much. This sucks. The dogs will miss you.
Thank you, Dana Breen. Thank you for all the wonderful signs that she's put out and talked people into putting out for me. I see them all. I'm taking photographs. And I'll try to get somebody to post them on the forum for me. I can't do it myself. So, I will do my best to do that.
Our dog will miss you too. Lou, thank you. Good luck. And we hope we will see you around in a less formal capacity.
Yes. I hope so. Thank you very much. And Tim, congratulations. See you too. Tim, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you both.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Take care.
Take care. Bye, Lou. Bye, Jeff.
Bye, Tim. Okay. That brings us on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from tonight's consent agenda? Anne, go ahead.
A little slow. I might unmute. Yeah, I want to pull number four, five, and six, please.
Four, five, and six. Okay, I actually have a small correction to the minutes, so I'll pull three. That leaves us with seven, our appointment to the conservation committee. Does anyone want to make a motion on approving seven as consent?
They'll move.
Well, second.
Moved by Craig, seconded by Mary Ann. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wenger.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Alf.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Item three, minutes. I had a correction on red page 11. Second paragraph down cites Jennifer L. Everhart. It's misspelled. The correct spelling is Ebberhart with a B as in boy in place of the V as in valley. I just wanted to correct that.
She also, I think she's also a DT, not just a T, isn't she? I could be wrong on that.
So, DT, what are you looking at?
Ebberhart with a DT, but I.
Oh, you know what?
She is. I just Googled it. She has a DT.
You're right. You're right. Thank you. Yep. Okay. Any other corrections to the minutes? Okay, with that correction, I could take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Craig. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wenger.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Alf.
Aye. Okay, item four. Anne?
Yeah, and four and five I'll put together really, since they're obviously the same, but different, different periods of time. And I think I would, I would start my comment by just probably, and Cindy, thank you for joining us, and Brandy for the next item. Because obviously, we're looking at a new format. And the first thing that I just, was more of a question really than anything is, is that on this first warrant list, we had, your first document that we see here is one that's called a journal entry edits. And it obviously then presents a number of the items that, you know, clearly total up, et cetera, in terms of how they all worked. But if I swing you to the next journal, the next version of this, which I think is page 26, or I'm just trying to get to it. 28. Yeah, that looks very different in terms of what we're looking at because it's titled cash requirements. So, I know some of this is because it's the first time we've seen the new system. And so, that was the first real question why obviously they both were formatted very differently, et cetera, because that's, I didn't expect to see that. But probably more importantly, I guess I would request, and this is a request more than anything, knowing we have a new robust system that allows for customization of reports, I think it's going to be really important to take this one and really dissect it in a, in a way that's going to be something that is going to be probably a little more useful than this because I had to really spend a lot of time. And I understand the groupings are different. We're more departmentally oriented. You have general fund, and then you have capital improvements. And there's, that all makes sense, but I think there's a much more readable format that we can develop. So, my request would be, can we begin working on that immediately?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And, and start, and if you want input from any of the council, I'm sure a number of us would be willing to, to provide that, just in suggestions. Because I immediately went to some thought to how we might reformat some of it. But, so that's really my comment that I wanted to make relative to both of these agenda items. I did not have, you know, any numbers that I thought were incorrect or there wasn't, I didn't have questions about any of the items that we're proving. But it's, there's, there's so many different ones that I think it's really worth taking this apart in the next few weeks. And again, I think that there's a couple of us that would be happy to help if that's of use to you. And I'd be interested in what my colleagues thought too, before we move off this.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this? Craig, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think it's, you know, it's, it's different from what we had been seeing. And obviously, you know, structured differently and laid out differently. I hadn't actually noticed the, the difference between the two reports for the, the two different ones. I, I missed that. But, um, yeah, I think, you know, cleaning it up and figuring out how to present it and put the information in that it's helpful. And, you know, leave out some of the information that's maybe more distracting and not so relevant. Would make it a lot easier to kind of parse through it and understand in the way that's closer to what we were used to. I, I think it has a lot of the same information, maybe even all the same information, but it's, it's just the way that it's laid out and presented. Part of it may just also be us getting more used to reading the new format, but I agree, Anne, now that we can actually tweak the presentation of some of these reports, it may be worthwhile just thinking about precisely what makes sense to put on them.
Mary Ann, do you have any thoughts, Sharon?
I, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I looked at it quickly and I kind of waded through it for the first time, thinking that I'd probably get used to it. But, um, yeah, it's given, I, sometimes it's occurred to me that we could actually make it more readable. So I think if there's anything, and I'd have to think carefully about what it would take, what, what the options out there are. But yeah, I'm all for trying to make it as, as easy to read for us and every, and the public as possible. So. If, Anne and Craig, do you guys want to work with Cindy a little bit on, on, on ideas about this? I mean, I, I might have ideas myself, but I thought maybe you two probably read more of these financial reports.
Happy to, happy to.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll move approval of items four and five.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Mary Ann. Sharon, roll call vote, please. I think you're muted, Sharon.
Councilmember Wenger.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Alf.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Item six, Anne.
Yes, and thank you, Brandy, for joining on this one. Really a question and a comment, comment, comment as well, excuse me. But the first I'll start with is that I just was trying to, in looking at this clearly, noted that the IT services contract amounts are obviously significantly different from what we've been spending the last few years. And so you now have, and it looks like in the next year where we're looking at 42,000 as a budgeted, or anticipated budgeted amount, we're at a delta of almost 50% higher than what the contract calls for. And I, I think some of this discussion will come up in our discussion later on about the budget. But in my mind, any of these items on the expense side that are having major increases during this time period, I think it's going to be very important to understand what, what's included in what I'll call the contract amount? And what is it that's pushing us into significant overages already? And I know this is only for one year. But again, I think these are all starting to blend together. And I, and I wondered whether the question really was, is the timing for this such that we need to approve it tonight? Or, or is that something that is not necessarily the case for this item? Because I didn't really understand what the, the start and end dates of this. I know it's for the next fiscal year. So if it is the fiscal year, then we're already in it. And so if we are already in it and it's necessary to have this as soon as we can, I, I think your number is reasonable in terms of how it's progressed, but I'm going to, I would want to come back to it at some point as we're going into the full budget to understand it a little more fully.
So I guess what I would say is that if the contract amount is what we're, you know, we're, we're not necessarily obliged to pay, but we get a refund if we don't spend that amount. But last year, we were quite conservative with that contract amount and this year as well. And the overages for this year are due to transferring our entire staff to remote working and a lot of our processes to electronic processes. And so you'll see that we're actually, even with that, we're only $1,884 over the budgeted amount. And so I think, given your feedback this evening, that next year I would probably increase the contract amount to more closely match the budgeted amount, knowing that we will, we will likely spend closer to that amount. As we've, you know, transitioned to more electronic processes and increased software, we are requiring more time from, from Redwood City IT for those things. And then especially now that we will likely continue with this remote working for some time, we do rely, we will rely on them more. Things come up, you know, we, we have, in this process, we have done some upgrades to our systems. We've increased our capacity for remoting in accounts. We have increased the capacity of the VPN device and replaced it. We've increased our internet bandwidth so that we could more efficiently work remotely. So those are some of the things that have contributed to that amount this year. But, you know, since we anticipate more of that remote work and, you know, there's glitches that come up as people change computers or, you know, we will rely on their services more. So with that feedback, I will increase, I will more closely match the contract amount with the budgeted amount.
And, and I appreciate that. So thank you for that. I think the only other comment I would make is that part and parcel of this discussion will be, as we do have a significant part of our workforce now on remote work, then there may be some commensurate savings will benefit from in other parts of our budget as we look down on our expense categories. Because if people's change, jobs have changed to the extent that the remote work is a much bigger percentage of that time, then there may be additional savings as we review our positions and everything and workloads, et cetera, that, that we may be able to take advantage of. So, I, I agree. I, I'm sure your comments are correct about what we're spending. And it's just, I think, I think going forward, just given these numbers are getting pretty big every year. So thank you for that analysis.
Craig, go ahead.
Anne, I just wanted to clarify that the, the, the big question or issue that you have is really between the budget amount versus the contract amount, as opposed to the, what the actual budget amount is. It's not so much, I mean, it may be partly looking at it to see if we can reduce the cost, but it's more just bringing the contract amount in line with the budgeted amount is what you're trying to get at.
I think that's right, Craig. But what I don't know, and that's why you can't tell from this, is what was included in the contract amount and obviously the areas in which we're.
Yeah, so I mean, as I read the contract, it's really, you know, we're, we're paying a monthly charge plus an hourly rate. And so, if, if we were to, if we were to increase the contract amount to bring us in line with what we're actually spending, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us any less. We'd still have the same number of hours at the same price.
Well, again, I don't know.
The contract estimate's 156 hours and we'd actually have 180 or whatever. So it would be a higher dollar amount, but we'd still get a refund if we use less and we'd still pay more if we used more hours. So that the total cost would be, I think, about the same either way.
I agree with you in terms of how the calculation would go. I think my questions really run more towards what's in there.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have an understanding of what are we spending the 156 hours on and is there a more efficient way of doing that? But yeah, yeah, point taken. Yeah, and just through the chair, as part of the budget discussion in, particularly in September, we'll have all kinds of detail related to this to, to help. Tonight's conversation's a little, little more meta-level, but yes. Thank you.
Does it make sense to have this come back in September as we've done it and, given your point, what you just said, Brandy, about increasing?
You know, it would, it would be wonderful if it could be approved this evening, since we are in the fiscal year. I, we're, you know, the further we go, even though the town manager from Redwood City has signed it, we need to execute the agreement so that we have the liabilities in place that we need, especially given the current COVID situation. It, it is a bit of an arduous process to go through Redwood City's contract process. And so I actually had hoped to bring a three-year contract this evening, and I will hopefully do that next year, given that arduous process. And I will likely start it in March. So, it would be wonderful if we could execute it this evening.
Yeah, just to amplify what Brandy's saying through the chair, it, it took a long time to get this here tonight. And we would have had it sooner had that worked out better. So we're working on that.
Craig, go ahead.
So I, I'd say I'm, I'm fine with approving it tonight, Anne, because I believe the dollar amount wouldn't change. And so the budget exercise for September, we can do separately from executing the contract. And as, as Brandy and Jeremy have said, you know, we should get the contract in place. The, the amount we'll pay for the coming year will be the same either way. And we can figure out as part of our budgeting exercise through September, what the actual costs are, where the hours are going under the contract. I think.
And I appreciate that. I particularly can understand the process that they're going through. You've gone through with, with our provider.
Yeah, I will say with this contract, we actually, with Carr's help, we've put additional non-disclosure elements into it. And we had it reviewed again by our insurance company to make sure that the liabilities, liability protections are, are solid.
Well, and I think we're operating in good faith with them and always have been. So if it's our internal review, then it's our internal review. And we can really focus it on, at the time that we're reviewing our entire budget. So, I'm good with that.
In that case, I could entertain a motion.
What item number is this? Six. I move approve, move approval of item six.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Craig. Any other discussion? Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wenger.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Alf.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. That brings us now to item eight, which is the quarterly report from the ad hoc wildfire prep committee.
Mayor Alf, members of the council, thank you very much. Very quickly, we'll go over this. As you recall, in December of 2019, the wildfire prep committee made a set of recommendations to the council, of which the vast majority were approved. Per the recommendation of the wildfire prep committee chair, we are now going to be providing quarterly reports to both the committee and this body. And yesterday, we presented that update to the committee towards the end of a long meeting. There were no comments at the time. It's the same report. I hope the color coding comes through. It's always sort of difficult to figure out the best way to present this kind of information. But what I hope is obvious from that is that of the recommendations.
particularly in short term, we have completed some. There are a number that are underway, that are continuous, that don't really have a completion time. There are some that are underway. And I think most importantly, number one is, I think, what most people see in the community. And I'd like to share in just a moment, some photos of that work, because I think that it's actually pretty extraordinary. And then there are a few items that have not begun. And that's in part due to COVID, in part due to that they do take some more time. So I think particularly around what would be item one O, which is the building code work. And then certainly in the medium term, the items that should start this calendar year. So while I pull up those photos, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Are there any questions right now from the council? Why don't you go ahead with the photos then, Jeremy?
Okay, great. Just give me one second while I find them. I thought I had them queued up, but they disappeared on me. Okay. Let me know if you can see my screen. Do you see a photo?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. This is Escobar. Let me actually start this way. Should be able to cycle through. This is before on Escobar. This is after. Some more after work on Escobar, pretty significant. So it's ladder fuel and then it's living the trees. I think Howard put these in backwards. So that's before, that's after. More after on Escobar. Before, after. This is near the priory. So this is, looks like after, let's do before, pretty significant change there. So people are enjoying that view. Possum after some work, that's before. This is sausal after and before, you can see pretty significant. Again, before and after. Westridge. Before and after. I don't have another picture there. So that's, that's all of them. As a reminder, the, the council authorized $27,000 and $28,000 in last year's budget to support this work. But as we, as we figured out very quickly, that it required additional staff from the town to participate in the work, particularly on high-traffic areas to do the traffic mitigation. So the expense to the town is actually somewhat higher than $27,000. And as part of the budget conversation tonight and into September, we're going to be looking at the potential to ask for additional monies to continue that work. We're, we're hopeful that the work, as identified through Woodside Fire and the Public Works Team, will be substantially complete by the end of this calendar year, which is, I think, a pretty extraordinary effort that, again, started with the council determining that this was necessary just over a year ago. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Mary Ann's got her hand up. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I have a question that's also in the chat. Have we received a response from MidPenn?
Not a significant response. It's an ongoing conversation with them.
Or will there be another step to get a better response?
It'll likely, through the chair, involve me having a set of additional conversations with them. They tend to be, unfortunately, a little slower than we care to have them be as it relates to these issues. They're aware, they're very aware that we want them to move along. Their last set of conversations around fire mitigation management indicated that they weren't planning to do significant work in the short term. So at that time, I made additional comments to their general manager that that was challenging to us and frankly disappointing, given that this has been on the docket for so long. So I plan to continue to use my time to try to get them to move along on this. And I think that the Wildfire Committee will likely play a role a little bit later this year in helping them move along. But it is candidly a source of frustration.
And they are answerable to their board, correct?
That is correct.
And I know, when is, do you know when our representatives is up for reelection?
I don't. I can provide that information to the council.
You know, I think it might be nice if he had a little competition for that, that race when it comes up. I haven't found him to be very responsive.
Jeremy, there's one more question in the comments in the chat section part, which is, what are we asking MidPenn to do? Do you want to just quickly summarize what we've asked them for?
Yeah, we've asked them to accelerate and expand a variety of vegetation management efforts on the two properties that they operate in Portola Valley, in particular, Windy Hill. They've done some work. They've identified additional work that does not look to be scheduled, at least this calendar year. So we're asking them to continue to do that. Had a very brief conversation with the brand-new executive director at the Sequoias on this issue last week. So he was aware that there was going to be a role for him to play as well in advocating on behalf of the Sequoias who are closest to this, but also in conjunction with the work that I'll be doing in town.
Any other council questions on this item for Jeremy?
I'll just say that we, we had a meeting yesterday, and the committee is still very, everyone was there, and they're still trying to move forward on various items, especially, well, actually, just on all fronts. Ron Home Hardening, Karen Votcher, gave a really great survey of, of wood shake roofs in Portola Valley, of which we, she found 149. The, the, the Communication Outreach Group has been active. They've been sending out a tip every month. And we had a good presentation yesterday from, about the Zone Haven software. And Don Bullard was there and talked about the, the, the fire districts, sort of their, their latitude in terms of enforcing fire code on private properties. I thought it was, it was a long but very, very productive meeting. So I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to add anything to that.
No, I, I was, I thought it was very, very productive. A lot of information. Nothing to add. And through the chair, there is one attendee request for comment or question.
Yes, go ahead and comment.
Rusty, A178 Pinion Drive. First of all, submitting my comments on behalf of Portola Valley Neighbors United. We wrote the council yesterday and also Ad hoc Wildfire Preparedness Committee. And certainly want to commend the committee, and we're thankful to the committee to work on this. But what I'd like to talk about, and we've talked about this at some prior meetings, is a somewhat bolder agenda for taking on the threat and risk that wildfire presents to our community. And I'll be brief in my comments, but to put it in historical perspective, 50 years ago, some of the founders of Portola Valley and some of the residents of Portola Valley got together and pioneered a set of land use regulations to address the risk and the threat that seismic instability presents to us. Dwight Crowder was preeminent among that group, a USGS, renowned USGS geologist, who pushed the town to recognize that it was incumbent upon the town to draw upon geologic science to recognize the risk that earthquake, subsidence, ground movement, landslide, erosion, all presented to the town, and to develop appropriate land use regulations and ordinances to deal with that. And he pushed that for five years. Ultimately, the town formed in 1970 a geologic safety committee. Some of the original members on that committee were renowned USGS and Stanford geologists, Earl Pampayan among them. And they developed a set of general plan principles and objectives and a set of ordinances that, together with George Mayer, were pioneering and widely acclaimed, not throughout just California, but throughout the United States and indeed in Europe. And we're presented with the same opportunity here. If anything, the risk that wildfire presents to our community is greater than the risk.
Rusty, you're two minutes in. Please wrap up quickly.
Am I limited to two minutes?
Three.
Okay, I didn't hear that at the beginning of the meeting. All right, well, so I'll be brief then. We've sent you a seven-page letter, and I'd like to see the council address the issues that are raised in that letter. A, develop a set of general plan and ordinances that regulate land use in town to reduce the risk of wildfire. B, establish a position for a public safety officer to administer those regulations and to implement what is already in the general plan and has been for 10 years, the development of an emergency operations center, staff it and operate it, evacuation plans for the town, publicize them, practice, rehearse, and teach people in town how to employ them. And then three, adopt ordinances that require the removal of ladder fuels from properties throughout town in accordance with a schedule of risk, much like that promulgated in the Maritz report 12 years ago for the town about very high fire risk and high fire risk in the town. Those, those areas of town whose vegetation and topography and aspect create a very high risk of fire should be subjected to a requirement to reduce and remove the ladder fuels that cause wildfire throughout the community. Thank you.
We are in receipt of your letter, Rusty. Thank you. Jeremy, do you care to respond to any of that?
Just, just a few points of clarification. And Rusty, I did send you an email earlier today. I think there were a few points that I'll just take the opportunity in the public record to clarify that the town does have an established EOC. It's been in place for many, many years. We regularly hold exercises. And we're expanding that into drills in the coming months. We'd actually hoped to have a drill. We'd scheduled it for September. COVID has delayed that. This would have been evacuation drill, but it is inaccurate to state that we don't have an operating EOC. We do do that. Other issues I just want to bring up quickly, we, on a regular basis, partner with Woodside Fire in firesafe Samatia County on grant requests, including one we, we applied for recently from PG&E and unfortunately did not get. The, there are, vegetation management, as I discussed earlier, is underway. A few other points in the email, and per, I understand the practice of PBNU. If, if my response to PBNU's letter can be put on there, on your website, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments, this was no action required. We will move on.
Jeff.
Yes. Oh, sorry, Mary Ann, go ahead.
Sorry, there was, I, the chat, there was a question that we didn't address.
Yes. Oh, I, okay, yeah, it's out of order. Okay. What can we do to accelerate the building code changes? I, Jeremy, do you want to answer that one? This is from Karen, maybe Karen Votcher.
Sure. So I would say a couple of things, and I apologize if my answers tend to sound bureaucratic, but I think that they're important as it relates to how these things get completed. I think the first is that the Wildfire Committee made a recommendation to do this work. When those recommendations came to my office, I did my best to assign them to short and medium-term goals. It would have been impossible for the staff to complete 25 or 30 tasks at once. So we put them in those categories. Building code is, is expected to be, certainly begin this year as it relates to these issues. It does take a significant amount of time to get a building code amendment of this scale through. It usually has multiple meetings with the Planning Commission. And even for those issues, that there may be a sense of agreement in meetings like this or other places, there are often people who are opposed to these types of changes. So I don't, that's my bureaucratic answer. I also, for point of order, do have a, a planning director who's on a medical leave right now. So there's some of this work is not going to be started anytime soon. Certainly, if the committee, Wildfire Committee wants to make a recommendation back to the council to, to move things around, we can do that, and we do our best to accommodate it. But building code changes are significant. So they're not, they're not something you can normally do in one or two passes. Sorry for that.
I will, I will vouch for Jeremy on this one. I, you know, I, and I said this several times during our meetings, that it was going to take some time for us to do both the building code changes and the changes to the design guidelines, which are also somewhat, they're, they're a little out of date because they sort of put buildings down in the path of fire as opposed to lifting them out of canyons and things, away from, from, from fire spread threats. There are two long-term projects. They really got sidetracked this year by COVID. I, I don't think anyone's questioning their, their importance or our desire to tackle them. They will just take longer than we would like. Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, we will move on to item nine, our update on race and equity. Is this Jeremy or Mary Ann or?
I'll start, Mary Ann, and then I think you have some updates. My side of the update is that we have started to receive comments through our online portal. I think we, we're, we hope to get many more. But so far, I think that they've been generally very productive and useful in understanding what people's concerns are. We're going to continue to promote the tool through all of our means. But certainly, anyone who's listening, if you have not participated, please do. And please share with those who you think should participate. In particular, we are also interested in hearing from people who work in the community. And if any of those folks speak Spanish, we have a Spanish-speaking page available to them. That's a, a voice that I think is equally critical as it relates to this. Mary Ann, I turn it over to you for any comments you might have.
Thanks, Jeremy. My partner is in the wilderness, so it's just me tonight. I'd say last meeting, we heard loud and clear that the community wants input, which is what we want, and that's the portal. And if you go to the portal, you'll see that not that many people have commented yet. The people who have commented have, have made very robust comments, and we really appreciate it because the comments are going to guide us to our next steps. And the next steps could be forming a committee or, or planning a Zoom Town Hall. In the last month since our last meeting, John and Jeremy and I had a Zoom meeting with Captain Christina Corpus. We asked her many of the questions, or all of the questions that had come from the community as well as our own. There were actually, I think we should probably type up those notes because there were some really interesting responses that I had not ever heard of. But the big step is to, is to meet with, excuse me, Sheriff Bolanos. And perhaps we might want to do that in a Zoom Town Hall. I don't know. John and I had a Zoom meeting with Kim Akers, Lucy Neely, and Suda Fatima. These women have been working on the discussion group after the protests, which I believe both Jeff and John have been attending. Suda is doing a project, I don't, I think she lives in Emerald Hills. She's doing a project with a group in Redwood City for Nextdoor. She's found that the panel that does the moderating on Nextdoor tends to suppress minority voices. And she would like to hire, them to hire a panel that's been trained to moderate conversations about race. And instead of blocking people, explain why they're being blocked or educate them. So that's what she's doing. We did hear from that group that they would really like to have a Zoom Town Hall. And John and I have been watching all the Zoom community forums that are happening in our neighboring communities, such as the Race and Policy and the Color of Justice Zoom on June 26th, the Racial and Social Justice in America Zoom on 7/1. That one you can actually see if you go to Mid Penn Media Center. That one is on YouTube, and they will have a part two on July 29. I tuned into, let's talk about racism, racial, when your neighbors profile, racially profile your other neighbors. racially profile your other neighbors. That was a really interesting one. That was on July 9. So I think we could learn from those panels, those Zooms, how to do it. And I also know many of the people on the panels, and I'm sure they would be happy to help us out. So at this point, I just want to urge everybody to go to the portal and give us your comments. I would love to have something to bring to the council to vote on at the next meeting. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, just a few more comments from the three, through the chair to share that we've identified a number of potential training opportunities for the council that Mary Ann and John are taking a look at and will make a determination on which one makes the most sense. I will be through our long-term professional development consultant, Zakiya Calfani, will be holding one for my staff in the next few months. She actually has two classes that we plan to hold. And just one interesting side note, I recently brought on board an intern. He's actually one of the Stanford students who participated in the study that was part of the wildfire prep committee's presentations yesterday on the efficacy of Los Altos, excuse me, Los Trancos Woods fire prevention efforts. And he has interned with Jennifer Everhart in the past, and I've asked him to come on board. He's a member of the LGBTQ community to help with that perspective in these conversations as well, and he agreed to connect us with Jennifer when appropriate. Thanks.
I'll just add that I have been at three of the last four sort of demonstrations on Sundays and the discussion groups after, which Kim Acker has been leading. It's been a really, it's been a really, I think, a great response from the time we've had. Sunday, we had about a dozen people. I was actually out of town the week before, week before that. We probably had 15 people. It's been a really good discussion group, and I know there, I mean, Kim's reached out to you, Mary Ann, and I think that's, it's a group that's really wants to sort of take up this, take up the baton of part, as part, being part of this conversation. So I'm very encouraged by that, and you know, there's all kinds of ways to go to this. I'm not, you know, it's sort of hard to imagine what's the, what were the best choices or what are the easiest, what are the right ways to go forward? But I'd love to have something else to consider next time we're together. Thank you. There is a public comment from Rita. Go ahead, Rita.
And Rita, you may need to unmute at your end. There you go.
Rita Comas Whitney on Westridge. And at the last council meeting, I mentioned some wording that was in Councilwoman Derwin's comments about three people that had been killed by tasers by the sheriff's department and asked that that wording be changed. For me to get those words changed, since they have not been changed and, and people are still commenting on that statement, do I need to write that in the portal or is there another way I can go about having that be changed or at least have another sentence or two put with that?
Jeremy, is there a way to, Mary Ann, do you want to respond? I was gonna follow up on
I just wanted to correct the record. Those were not my words. I did not write those words. They were in a memo that was under my name and John's name, but a lot of it was written by the staff. And they were capturing comments that were made by participants in a meeting before. And they were not in the resolution. They were just in the report. Do we change words in reports? I don't know if we do. Resolution.
That was my question.
Respectfully, respectfully, I'd like to say if someone does make what I, wherever they get it from, but repeat a racist comment that the public feels very strong about, and I noticed that somebody else in the portal had commented about tasers and, and that statement, that those things should be, you know, any statement should not just be made, and just because somebody saw it someplace else, it needs to be corrected, in my opinion.
Craig, go ahead.
I, I, I tend to agree that, you know, the purpose of reports is clarity. And while I, you know, I think that the language in the report is subject to different interpretations. I do agree that if read, I think not in the way it was intended, it can certainly be read to have racist connotations. And I think that the purpose of reports is clarity. So I don't think that the council has acted on the report. We didn't formally accept it or anything like that. It was really more of a memo. So I think it would, it would probably be something the subcommittee could fairly easily do to issue a new memo or the same memo with a correction or something like that for, for whatever the next report is from the subcommittee to the council that clarified the language. I don't think that that's something that would necessarily be very difficult to do. And I think that it could go a long way to addressing the issue that I think Rita is raising. So I don't know that we as a council need to take an action because we didn't take an action to accept the report or anything in the first place, but if the subcommittee wanted to send a new memo to the council for our next packet, that might address the issue. I, maybe Rita, if that makes sense to you as a, as a path forward.
That would be, that would be helpful if there's a process in place. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add that in the minutes from the June 24 meeting, I noticed this tonight, that Mary Ann actually pointed out the clarification that, of that report, which she acknowledged in the minutes. It's in the minutes that it was written improperly. I'd be happy to correct that going forward. Mary Ann, did you want to add to that? Yep.
Yes, that's what I wanted to say. It's in the public record because in the meeting, I dialed down into the sentence and said, they, you know, there were three men. I don't know if I named them, which I'm happy to do. They weren't all African-American. That wasn't even accurate. And they all had different diagnoses of either a mental health issue or substance abuse and/or both. But I'm happy to write that and bring it to the next meeting, but it is in the minutes.
Any other public comment on this item? Any other council comment? Okay, that's, in that case, we are not taking action on this tonight. Craig, go ahead.
I mean, I just had a comment that I, I, I look forward to, you know, seeing the things that are probably coming at our next meeting or shortly in terms of, you know, training programs and moving to next stage beyond, beyond the portal. I think the portal's been very helpful in giving people a forum to voice things. But I'm looking forward to, you know, the next steps and where we go from here.
Christie Corley has her hand up. Christie, go ahead. Christie, I'm not hearing anything.
Christie, you're, now you're unmuted. You should be able to speak.
Maybe trying, but we can't hear. There may be.
Maybe try the chat, Christie.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have the ability to. I have her unmuted in my end.
Christie, I
mute cycling on and off, but I can't hear in either mode, so I think there may be some, some other audio problem.
So Christie, if you can hear us, please put your comments in either the Q and A or the chat, and we'll, we'll address them if we can.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay, we will move on to item 10, which is the revised budget for fiscal year 2021. Jeremy, you're starting, isn't this?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor Alfs, members of the council. So tonight, we hope to provide you with information to have a conversation about essentially what type of budget you would like to see presented by staff. The discussion that starts on page 69 discusses the variety of inputs that we're certainly using to understand what kind of budget is possible in this COVID world with the impacts that we've seen. The discussion details a variety of vulnerable revenue sources and both those revenues that are potentially impacted, but some opportunities as well. The CIP program does not wait, and that there are things that certainly would be appropriate to bring forward should the council wish to review them as part of a budget. I actually think the most important and interesting section is red page 71, under other considerations. There's a variety of other items that are should be under consideration, including the fact that we are eligible to receive up to $56,000 for COVID-related purchases. So this could be used for what we've already done or things in the future. Consideration of any of our larger construction projects that we normally do. And then the use of the funds that are in restricted funds that couldn't be used for general fund purposes, but is the council interested or eager to start deploying those resources, particularly for OPEB trust fund and retirement trust fund? There will be an item on the next agenda that came from the finance committee around the OPEB trust fund and a recommendation from them about making some expenditures there. Finally, there are a set of pretty significant initiatives that the town has recommended and the council has put into priorities over the last year that will will cost money. And you can see some of those detailed in the staff report, housing element, general plan, climate action plan. So we really just wanted to start to, to hear from you. As a tentative re-review of the COVID impacts, we have found that our assumptions from April, what we presented, are still generally holding up well. The, what I think is important to note, first of all, we noted that sales tax, we, we actually just zeroed it out, but that's not accurate. We don't typically get sales tax updates until about two quarters later. Sometimes it's a quarter, but right now it looks like two quarters. But in conversations I've had with certain businesses in town, there were certain businesses that did actually better than they normally do in a, in a typical year. So we certainly won't see a loss of $81,000 in sales tax. It'll be something much less than that. Our ERAF came in much higher than we budgeted. We talked about that in our assumptions. Also, franchise and user utility taxes are up a bit. The other area that I think is important to note is that there have been a variety of public works expenditures, small ones, but they do add up over time that I've had to authorize, including some repair to vehicles and some of the work that we do in our, in our, on our campus and in our, and our properties. But the overall assumption that we were going to be down, you know, in the $150,000, $175,000 range still holds. So, you know, moving forward, we're not anticipating what I would term significant revenue impacts. Depending on what happens with COVID, we're, we'll certainly see impacts related to field use, sports leagues, instructors. Many of our instructors are not, even if they had the opportunity, are not eager to go back to, to begin activities. And every day, it seems we get new direction from the state on sporting activity. So we're not sure what that will look like. And certainly renting our facilities, there doesn't seem to be high demand. Planning activities are, are all up at this point. There are opportunities for people to submit planning and building applications through the PB Connect tool. So we should start to see that revenue return. Some of that's passed through. Some of that supports our staff. The, the interesting thing there is we probably won't really know what level that activity is at for at least a quarter. But every indication is that there's still interest on both sides of planning and building to work at basically the levels that we're used to in our community. We don't anticipate property tax impacts. And I think that that's it I wanted to say. So really, we just wanted to get a sense of, if you will, the flavor of the budget you'd like to see. The council has indicated earlier on some desire to be more conservative in its approach and more modest in its approach. I think that that was true as it related to the use of restricted funds for road resurfacing project. And our interim budget only includes a few capital projects that we thought were vital and, and needed to be worked on this summer or could be worked on this summer. We aren't, we aren't necessarily recommending such a modest budget as we think that our revenues are, are holding well. As we begun development of the budget internally, staff is looking at places to make tactical reductions where it makes some sense. And that could include the not funding of open positions. We have one open position currently in the planning department that we may not fund and said use some consultants that'll bring some savings. So all the departments are starting to think about that. So I would anticipate bringing forward a budget that has some level of reduction over last year's budget. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and would love to answer any questions or hear comments about what the council would like to see vis a vis a budget. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for anyone, for Jeremy from the council? Anyone? Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, Jeremy, the one, and thank you for this. I think obviously we knew this was coming, so we're off to the races. The one thing that was, it jumped out at me when I started to read this in terms of not being included in your discussion was anything related to expenses. You have revenues, you have CIP. And I think when I look forward and know that we are now entering an era of what I'll call a long-term pandemic scenario, to have a pretty significant component of remote working on the part of staff. I think that in my mind, you know, we're probably safe putting it all the way through to the end of this next budget year, you know, with that scenario in place. So we can talk about that, but just as a starting point for what I'm, the point I'm going to make, which is area that July 1 of this year, all the way through June of next year, and I, believe me, I hope I'm wrong. And I would love nothing more than to adjust back. But if that's the scenario, then in my mind, it's part of, a big part of this discussion starts with how we would look at how all of our staffing is working. Are people working remotely? And, and obviously, your position is the first one we'd be talking about, about how much time you're in the office and other issues related to that, as well as the other staff members. And are there any savings to be gained there? Or as you said, potentially not fill positions or move things into outsourcing? To me, those create a lot of very different possible scenarios of how our biggest expense item, which is staffing and related benefits on all of the fronts that we know to be medical, OPEB, you know, name them all. It could have a material impact. So I think that that was the one part of the discussion I thought was not here, that I certainly would benefit from, not necessarily discussing tonight, but to understand as we're starting into these discussions, what scenario in your mind you're operating under relative to those issues like that? And then there are other, obviously, things related to expenses that we all know, and, and you've outlined a number of them, and I think we'll get into them as we were reviewing specific budget things. But that, that was really my question of, had you thought of that or is it just?
Yes, through the chair, we have, and it's, it's an evolving conversation. It's somehow, it's difficult to articulate because some of the information isn't quite there yet, but let me go through it. So we've, we've had in place now for just over a month, a staffing plan that allows people to go back in the office. And on any given day, there's typically two or three staff members. And so it depends on the activity that's necessary. I, I am not necessarily anticipating a significant change in the cost of operating town hall from a staffing perspective. There may be, there may be a few issues around utilities, a few other things, but I, I don't see those yet. Normally, I would say that that would happen in services and supplies, but some of those are simply contracts. They are what they are. Other ones, people need supplies, whether they're working in office or, or at home. That doesn't appear to have a significant change yet, but we're, we're looking at that. So I don't, I don't have a good answer yet, and that's part of our due diligence in the next period of time as we're preparing some kind of budget. The staffing piece is The staffing piece is as you mentioned, is where you're going to get the most significant savings. The planning position that's been open for a year, it is, we're anticipating not funding that. We don't want to delete the position, but we don't see funding it as necessary. And instead, replacing it with some consultant work that will come in below the amount that would be the the equivalent for because this is still work that we think we need to do. So there'll be some savings there, particularly on the the benefit side. So that would not be insignificant. We do want to fill the vacant account technician position. As you know, Cindy Rotis is now the permanent finance director. We do want to fill that. I don't know that I have that budgeted at the right level for the kind of expertise we're looking for. So I don't. I don't anticipate significant savings there. There's a conversation that's going on with all the managers right now to understand what a workload looks like. And the workload hasn't. We're not seeing reduction in the amount of time we're putting into work. We're just putting our time into different work. So that analysis is ongoing, but I'm not expecting that there are positions that change in the way it change in the amount of work they're doing. It's just going to be different. I mean, I think an obvious place for that is any front desk work. We're clearly not interacting with people right now, but we didn't interact with that many to begin with, and we had people working on other things they can work from home. So those are the issues we're starting to to go through. So the 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 short answer is I'm not anticipating significant reductions in expenditures on the operational side related to more people working from home because you're going to have people in the office. And you you don't. I I just don't see those yet. I'm talking to my colleagues to see what they understand around that. So the other city managers, the area that I've been thinking about a little bit, and I'm not sure that it's cost issue so much, but the utilization of space is going to change clearly. I'll give you an example. It may not be necessary for managers to have the kind of offices that they do. It may be that we have a more flexible working space in some way that's social distancing done appropriately. I don't know that that offers us any any expenditure savings at all, but those are the kind of things that I've been a little more focused on. Sorry for the sorry. That was a little bit of a rambler, but it's it's a complicated thing, and it's hard to sort of put down in paper.
Well, I just add that I think the the corollary to it is looking at the priorities and what we think can realistically be done. And so the workload now I know has changed to some degree. But in order to get some of these sort of general plan, using that as a an example, and I know planning is is one we're we're focused on. But, you know, however, that would get distributed amongst your staff internally and and with or without consultants. The ability to take on those projects is going to be pretty critical. I think to be able to start to move forward on this next cycle during this next twelve month period and to figure out what combination of remote and onsite working makes sense for however that we, you know, we want to organize that. But I think it is going to be that. And I think, you know, to the extent we can have some idea of what that mix is going to look like being remote and onsite will be very, very useful to how we how this budget looks.
I think through the chair, your analysis is correct that I I don't anticipate in the short term that our staffing is going to look significantly different until covid is under some level of control. I also think that it would. I I just don't see a scenario where we, and I mean this collectively, I don't mean Portola Valley, I mean government in general, that that so much of this can be done from home, that you're going to see a wholesale return of employees at a hundred percent. That's just not going to be the future. This is the first time in the history of the work from home movement that everyone had to come up with solutions. They were able to find them, and I just don't see going back. It wasn't like it was before. So I I think that there's absolute ways to accommodate that and do all the work that we should do. From just to dive in the details a little bit from on the planning side, I don't expect that we would be able to do significant planning work without the use of consultants. Now, depending on that work, some of it is reimbursable. As you recall, we got we we've received one grant. There's a second grant that the council authorized us to collect on that would be around housing element work. So I would expect most of that not to cost the general fund. But general plan work that will require, at least my opinion, outside consultant assistance. And, you know, zoning work doesn't require that, but that then that shifts potentially planners away from current planning work. And then you have to figure out how to make that happen. We're we think with the current mix of Dylan and then part time with Jake, who comes from Good City, and occasionally bringing in somebody else through a contract will cover those needs, which would allow Laura to concentrate on on zoning projects, for example. But, you know, we we certainly want Dylan to be involved in that as well. So that's, I think it depends on the type of project the council is considering. Housing element, I would absolutely recommend we budgeted and do it because it's not going to be an impact on our general fund, for example.
Mary Ann set her hand up. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you for bringing that up, Anne. I think we had, we started on this conversation at the mayor's meeting this week, or at least I started on this conversation, asking who's in the office, who's home, what are people doing? You know, what is Town Hall going to look like in six months? What is Town Hall going to look like in twelve months? And I think we need to get this maybe even on an agenda at some point because I'm trying to. I mean, you're saying it's never going to go back to the way it was. I'm saying I think it's going to go back close to the way it was. And maybe because I'm an old person and you're a young person, we have different views. But I would like to have more of a formal discussion about this at some point, but I do have some questions. Okay, the cares money. Go back. Do we have that in our hot little hands right now?
But we don't have it, but we'll we're going.
We're going to get it. We're going to get it. Okay. The O P E B question that you have down here, the O P E B trust fund, how much money would that be?
Well, the recommendation that's going to come out of the finance committee is to pay the full amount out of the audit, which is one point one million. So there's a you can either pay that at once or you could pay that over four quarters. So there's still some work to do there, but that's the recommendation is to pay it off as the council did five, six years ago for the retirement.
Nick, I remember that. Okay. The retirement trust fund question. So the finance committee has not looked at that yet?
No, they haven't had an opportunity to sit down with the pre funding organization that is out of CalPERS to to do that. So that's something we're scheduling with them. Similar recommendation.
And then the other, the only other thing I wanted to mention was for our housing element work for the Rena six. I there was, I don't know if there still is, planning money available.
There's there are multiple pots, so I would imagine that the vast majority of the work, if not everything, is covered by state grants and the like.
Yeah, yeah. So you're going to be on that?
Oh, yeah, we're we've already, the council has already authorized two different funding sources. One we've, one is good to go. The other one is in the process of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council for Jeremy or Cindy? Okay, I see two public comments. Christie Corley has her hand up again. Go ahead, Christie.
And Christie, you need, there you go. Christie, I think there's something wrong with your audio because I can see that you're unmuted, but Christie, please put your question in the Q and A or the chat, please. We moved to Betsy. Is that okay, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, Betsy, go ahead.
How do you do, council? You I can be heard?
Yes.
How do you do, council in town manager? Kara, how do you do? I guess I wanted to speak to Anne's previous comment as we're looking at council priorities and the budget in the face of so much colossal change and trying to read the tea leaves about what the future is going to be like. I recently attended a Cal Matters forum on the future of work. And there are a lot of people that think that things will not go back to the way they were. So that's that's probably not, things don't tend to go back to the way things were. And I think this could have great impact. I noticed, and you probably have read now and through the Palo Alto Weekly, that a majority of their council members, the town council, excuse me, city council of Palo Alto has written to to A Bag and Rena and Sacramento requesting a delay in the Rena six process and commenting that this process is moving too fast for the conditions that we're working under today. And I can imagine, having listened to this commentary, that both working with staff that is home and not able to access materials very quickly, if at all. And and working as a member of the public where I can see you in little boxes in front of me, but it's not the same as it was when we were all connected there at Town Center. And so it's 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 difficult to deal with topics that are as weighty as Rena six. Rena six is not yet with us, and yet are priorities. Particularly, I was reading priority number, is it number two? Now I've lost my place here. I'm sorry to say. Yes, housing strategic plan implementation, priority number two. The determination of expenditures for inclusionary housing funds, the further expansion of the affiliated housing program, and the adoption of a housing preference program for town units. I would like to ask if we can slow this process down. We're still in Rena five. I don't see the reason to accelerate into Rena six at this rate and at this time and in this environment. I would say that that is my piece for today. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Betsy. Jeremy, did you want to respond to that or?
I didn't have any comments on it. I I am aware that if you, I will say I'm aware of a few cities have asked to slow down the process. The I have no indication that that will happen. Like I was on a webinar before this meeting with Plan Bay Area and their twenty fifty plan, and they are not slowing down. If anything, they added units to San Mateo County. So there were certainly lots of questions from the people who were in the audience, listening to it and asking, you know, is this the right time for this? But not getting any sense from regional bodies that they're looking to slow down, not to say that the council shouldn't weigh in, should they wish to do so.
That was my sense from the A Bag General Assembly meeting we had recently as well, that, you know, M T C and A Bag are moving ahead as quickly as they can. They're already somewhat delayed on their side of the Rena six stuff, but they're trying to stick as much to the schedule from this point on as they can as they as they've you know, that they've figured out their work situation under covid. So they are, you know, we we could certainly ask to slow things down, but I I am not getting any indication that that's likely to happen.
And I would add to the chair, the, you know, one of the issues is that the county is in such a deficit on housing in the region is that simply adding enough units to catch up with the deficit, regardless of what it is in a post covid world, is substantial. You know, tens of thousands of units, if not more. So I I that that's their thinking. That's I think how they're approaching this. Christie, I'll try you one more time, but if this doesn't work, please ask you to put your questions in the, oh, here you go. You do have one. Can you please? This is I I don't think this is germane to the conversation, but I will read it. Can you please budget three banners to post around Portola Valley regarding Town Council elections? And four newspaper ads for Town Council elections ongoing in this future. I was told we could not put up banners this time regarding elections. Would you like me to comment on that?
Sure.
Or do you want to? Should we move on?
We can move on. I mean, this has been discussed before. Okay. Is that Jeremy, is that the input you were looking for on the budget item?
I I I think we need some more.
Okay, sorry. Greg, go ahead.
Sure. So my my comments broadly are, you know, I I think reflective of a lot of what's already been said tonight. I you know, I I I don't think it makes sense to probably change staffing levels up or down dramatically at this time. You know, we may shift some workload around. I think fundamentally, you know, we still have more or less the same amount of work to do. And and so there may be some some little tweaks there, but I wouldn't imagine any dramatic differences. I I, you know, I wouldn't anticipate laying off staff or reducing hours or increasing staff or hiring new people either. And so fundamentally, that means that our our staffing costs are not going to probably change significantly one way or the other. I appreciate, you know, from from seeing how my my business has been responding to everybody working from home, you do continue to have you know, stationary and costs and things like that, and occasionally having to have people upgrade their printers that they have at home or whatever other stuff, so that the cost savings in terms of having people working from home rather than offices. You know, in our case, we're looking at, well, do we still need to lease our office? Or as as big of an office, so we may have some cost savings there, but that's that's less of an option for the town. It's not like we're paying rent on Town Hall. So I I don't expect that on the cost side, we we have a lot of room to change things dramatically, other than, you know, what we what we what are kind of the optional work items. So capital and capital expenses that we could put off for a year or things like that. And so really, what I'd look for in the September budget is more caution around those or more flexibility even around those expenses that don't need to fall in the next twelve months. And so I I kind of view it similarly to how Howard normally brings us the road resurfacing project budget items or or contracts that he puts out for bid, where there's kind of a base set of items, and there's a number attached to that. And then there are kind of optional extras. And so if it turns out as we go through the next, well, I guess it will be nine months from September to June. You know, if it turns out that the revenue sources are actually better than we expected, or costs didn't go up more than we thought, and it turns out that we're in a better picture, then we have, we have, you know, expenditures lined up so that we don't have to postpone capital projects and things like that, that we can, we could address them in this year if we have room to. But if it turns out there's something unexpected or covid gets worse than we thought, or our expenses go up for some unexpected reason, or revenues fall short, or there's a cash flow issue because of covid, or there just, there's just enough uncertainty still out there that while I appreciate, you know, things, Portola Valley is in way better shape than a lot of other towns and a lot of other jurisdictions because we're smaller and we've been more prudent historically, and we have a more stable income base. There's just still a lot of uncertainty out there. And I I I think what I'd like to see from the budget is you know, looking at the projects that we feel we have or the 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 items we have to spend on and see that as kind of a baseline within a bunch of other things where you know, if we have the revenues to pay for them, then we we get to them. And if we don't, we push them off to future years. And really trying to think through it from that lens of what do we need to get done next year? And what could we put off if we needed to? Because not because we know now that we'll put need to put it off, but because six months from now, we may find that we have no choice. So it's not not looking at, you know, specific projects from that lens, but I think things like general plan update, you know, obviously, we want to get it done sooner. Things like updating the building code for fire safety, obviously, we want to get it done sooner. But if we if we end up in a situation and I don't know, January, February, March, April, as we head towards June, where we we just can't because the revenues haven't come in to pay for it, that we've got a kind of pre prioritized list of, okay, these are, these are the first things to go. And that we'd push to whenever whenever we're in a better situation.
Yeah, I was just looking through the council priorities and looking at things that I think, you know, we we need to continue with. I think I think the wildfire preparedness is something that we just, we have to keep going with. I mean, it's it's maybe not well, there's we're at it, we're spending some extra money on right now, but I think that I don't think that has to continue. You know, looking at, you know, I think, you know, the housing plan implementation, I mean, the 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 next arena cycle, we're not quite there yet, but we will be. And I, again, as long as the state's requiring it, I think we have. And I, again, as long as the state's requiring it, I think we have to keep, keep being prepared to meet their deadlines.
On Rena, there's, there's, there's still elements of Rena five that we have not completed under our current housing element. And so those activities need to continue because we, we have to, or the state will get angry.
But in terms of planning, I think we have to, I think we have to be setting aside, I mean, I'm thinking, I'm thinking as much in terms of bandwidth and the cost of bandwidth, you know, of people doing things as of the actual expenses of things. I also, you know, I think there's a handful of things under sustainability that, that I think we need to keep, at least just keeping in mind. I, I would like to see this reach code that we agreed to in April move forward. I know that's waiting on, 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 you know, on Laura coming back, a few other things like that. And then, you know, I just, I'm just looking through the list and, and you know, seeing that there's just a handful of things that I think we have to just keep going forward with because, you know, because someone, somewhere is not going to wait for us.
If this is to the chair helpful, I, I think, I'll start with, with Craig's premises on a potential framework to, to move forward. I, you know, whether the council or not tonight wants to literally start cutting priorities, I, I, that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing instead is build the budget to what I would call an acceptable level of, of risk associated with our revenue streams and, you know, not bringing in something that's in the red. And if we can add things based on how our revenue is doing and what the status of the world is, we can do that in, in some flexible way. So that doesn't, so what I think that means is it doesn't mean the council needs to say we need to cut priority five A necessarily. Or whatever, I'm just picking one. But instead, you know, look to see what, what we can do in the, in the light of what do we need to do now and what's nice to do now? And what should we think about doing now? The, I, I am optimistic that the revenue picture doesn't fundamentally change for us. I, I, there's no reason to think that. Our major revenue sources are either going to stay where they are, go up a little bit. Property tax is likely to still go up for us in the short term as people move. The utility users tax and franchise tax fees are going to go up. Our investments have been extraordinarily good. So, but direction to the staff as it related to thinking about a more modest budget was, if you will, despite that, to create some additional flexibility should we want to do other projects. So that I'm anticipating the council seeing something that, you know, looks five to 10% lower than normal in some of the operational places. Because I think we're, we're able to do that. But it's also, I think that reflects the fact that we're not going to be pulling in revenue for some of these things anyway. The, the, for me, the big one is planning and building activity. I, I, I don't have a great read on that. I don't know that the Great Recession is a good read to understand what that looks like. But I can tell you now that there is pent up energy to do some work. That could like, likely last us the year. The final thing I would say around staffing. I think it's reasonable to say that we are all, because we're so small and because we're not adding staff, we haven't added staff in a year plus. The work is, all work does is increase. We are not taking anything away. And the, even in the short period of time that I've been with the town, I've seen huge changes in the increased amount of work. I think a really good example was the fire prevention work. We did not anticipate doing that. And it's meant that there are things that we haven't done because we've had the crews out on the streets supporting it. So there's a whole suite of things in public works. Planning is absolutely increasing. We have had more public records requests in the last year than we've had in 20 years. That takes hours and hours and hours of work. So we're not planning to ask for anything, but you know, I think it's also important to note that staff is working at, you know, something close to capacity, if not capacity. So it's difficult to ask them to do more in that environment without considering literally taking something away or adding something. So, you know, again, we're not going to come forward with a position ad. We don't see that as necessary. We want to create flexibility in the current FTEs that we have as a reflection of the work and of COVID. So if the front desk person is going to be greeting front desk people, what can they do that we need to do? And there's plenty to do. That, that's not an issue. Thanks.
Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I like the way you framed it, Craig, from this, from a basic standpoint. And I think the only sort of add I would make to that is that in my mind, there is going to be a fair amount, and you just touched on it, Jeremy. There's going to be a fair variation amongst departments. And, you know, clearly Public Works, we know has never stopped working. They've been, they've been out there on the road, on the streets all the way along. So my expectations are there that if we're able to secure more funding, then it's, that's potentially a good area for, you know, additional projects to the extent we can afford them if our revenue streams are holding up. And similarly, planning. I think there's so many, so much that's in their court right now, both short and medium and long term. That I'd be interested as we get into this budget cycle to hear what their realistic take is with all that's happened and all that we, you know, know is going forward, what they, they think of the priorities that we've outlined here. Cause I agree, we're not really backing off any of those. And if anything, I think to the housing part of it, those are already underway and the fact that we have other affiliated partners, et cetera, just as an example, who may be bringing projects to us this next year. That's not something we're going to stop, or should we? Because it's obviously part of a bigger commitment to trying to meet our obligations in, under the current Rena cycle, much less six. And so I view that all of our priorities are there. And it's going to be really a matter of how much bandwidth we have within not only the revenue and expense side of it, but obviously just the staff. And how, how, to your point, if there are activities they used to do, that they're shifted and working on other parts of whatever department is clearly trying to move forward and understaffed relative to some of the demands on their time. Cause I see that, and Cindy's department as well is going to have a lot and continue to have a lot on their plate. So I certainly appreciate that the staff is, you know, doing a great job in terms of trying to manage a very dynamic landscape. And so as we get into this budget cycle, I'd be interested in your, their priorities as to how much time they think it would take for some of these other things that may not rise to the surface because they're not immediate or, you know, solve an immediate problem for somebody or move forward. And that's just part of our normal operations. Because I think that will help us to establish realistic expectations. And I think that's the best we can do in this environment.
No, I thank you for that, through the chair. I, the concept that we've discussed quite a bit, and this was pre-COVID, is flexibility in position. And being able to adapt to what needs are. And that's a, that's a huge part. COVID is providing additional opportunity to, to do that. So that, that's for sure. I think you're absolutely right as it relates to departments. Every department's going to approach this a little bit differently. And some departments have more opportunity for that flexibility than others, given what they do. And I, I think the other thing it's important to note too, when you look at the council priorities, some of these are simply staff spending time on them. And some of them are additional expenditures. And both have a cost. One is obviously direct. You can see it in the warrant list. One is that things take longer. And it's certainly a message that, I, I'm, it's not a message I'm happy sending my staff, but I recognize that things sometimes take longer when we're asking them to do more things. And that that's okay on some level. Until it's not, until we have to make a decision that we're going to do less, or we're going to add staff or, or otherwise. And I think the trend in the last couple of years is that, you know, we are asking people to do more, so things take a little bit longer. And when we hear from our residents that that's an issue, we try to ameliorate it or mitigate it and the like. But I think that's a component that's always, that can be lost in these conversations around, around this is that it may not be an obvious cost to the town in that line item, but again, public works is a perfect example of this. I mean, there are days that two to three guys are out doing fire mitigation. And I bottom lined it and I went, this is actually, I think from a priority standpoint, this is what the council wants to do. And to backfill this, it would cost more. So we could do this for now, but we have to have that conversation again with the council. Thanks.
Are we, are we giving you guidance, Jeremy? Is this helpful?
Yeah, I do think it's helpful. And, you know, with, with the council's permission, I'd like to, you know, particularly Anne is the, is the liaison to finance, work with her. And certainly, you know, Craig has, I think, put together the framework here and pick their brains offline in, in the approach. The council is going to have, the finance committee is going to have a budget in about six weeks, five and a half weeks. And we'll have a normal process, but I think I have a good sense of where the council is, as it relates to what you'd like to see. But I'll certainly reach out to Anne and gather any additional thoughts that she has about making this the best process possible, the best product possible.
Okay. Okay. In that case, we can, we'll move on. Brings us to item 11, which is the SMC Strong Business Funds reallocation. Jeremy?
I'll very briefly describe what's in front of you, and then I'd like to turn it over to Anne, who was instrumental in this being an agenda item. So as you recall, the council authorized up to $100,000 to support the SMC Strong program. That program was to support businesses in San Mateo County in, in our jurisdiction. That money is, only $20,000 has been allocated. Cause businesses did not take advantage of the program. So there's an additional 80 or an $80,000 remainder. And Anne wanted to discuss with the council opportunities to potentially use that. So with that, Anne, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Sure. And thanks, Jeremy. I think this one is really one that has been, it, it's an interesting and unfortunately, I, I'd hope we wouldn't have this conversation, but I think as we all know, COVID is not a short-term issue. And we've obviously, obviously already lost one of our tenants in the shopping center in town. And there's clearly some more stress being felt by a number of other tenants that we're made aware of. And I think probably we don't even fully understand the extent to which a number of our local tenants are hanging on, or maybe not even hanging on, or about to, about to pack it in, if you will. And I think one of the thoughts here was because of the fact that Sam Cede's program went out so quickly. You know, it did not reach all the people it needed to reach in time. And we obviously did not spend all that we had allocated. And as you know, I'm not somebody who's looking to spend extra money. That said, I really wanted to bring it to all of you to see what your thoughts were about whether we might consider a second phase of this program. And if we did, how big, how broad we wanted to make it look. And I put down on the second page, just kind of one potential option. And Jeremy and I had done some research into some other things, other communities. I think St. Carlos is the one that was leading the way with this kind of a program or similar to this. Which is you're really helping people who are still trying to make it, who are operating, they're in town. You know, we can, we can expand it to include Ladera, should we, should we so choose? And I know there's something that's, that's part of the discussion for this evening. And make it a very straightforward process, not one where we're spending a lot of time other than making sure these people are actually here. And each business would potentially get up to $5,000 for the expenditures you saw listed here, which is there's some very clear and direct correlation between the fact that COVID has had that, had the impact on their business. And so that we're helping them with, with equipment, which will enable them to continue to operate. And that could include expanding parking lots, you know, doing whatever physical alterations might be needed to facilitate operating in a different fashion than they have in the past. And so restaurants are clearly, now that, you know, inside dining is no longer allowed, everybody's back outside. That we're really, they're going to need to, those restaurants that remain or the deli or any number of operations of that type. And this would include, you know, somebody like Roberts as well, since they've clearly had, had major equipment installed and probably long since blown, blown through $5,000 in terms of their costs. But it's designed to really show the town's commitment to trying to help our tenants during this extraordinary time, to help all of our retail tenants who are operating within either just Portola Valley or potentially Ladera as well, since I think many of us shop in both places, you know, for different things and for different uses. So do we have an idea of how many would use it? I don't really, but my guess is we'd probably use at least half of it. Half of the remaining 80,000 and maybe more. And, and I think it's something that really is, again, a sign of our commitment to trying to help. And it's now months in. And so I think that we're going to have many more that are probably teetering at this point and really deciding with how long they're going to try and stick with it if they can stick with it. So love to hear your thoughts on, on what you all think.
Craig, go ahead. Yeah, I had a question. So Anne, in, on page, in that red 91, you said a maximum 50,000 grant program. That's 50 out of the 80. And, and I was just wondering why you had 50 there as opposed to the full 80? With whether they, your, your thought was, you know, another 30 for some other program, or we take the 30 back?
30 back. I think it was just that we, that it was very unlikely.
You don't think people will draw it down?
Exactly. So it was sort of reflective of the fact that this is what we think would be the most we would need. But if we got more, I think we could obviously overrule ourselves and potentially add more to the coffers if we chose to do it. And so maybe the maximum should stay at 80, just, you know. But we've used 20 of it. So, excuse me, we've used, we're at 80 now. Sorry. So it would still be 80. So I'm fine either way. I think we were just trying to get a, a realistic sort of number of what we thought would happen. That's 10, obviously 10 loans, because I'm assuming everybody will apply for a full $5,000.
Yeah, I don't think there's probably any business that had expenses, that the expenses are probably dramatically less than five grand. So.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, I, I, if, if there's someone up there that we can help, I, I feel like we should try to help them. I mean, it's small, but I, I, yeah, I, I would. I would support that.
I, I would say I'm not, I, I understand the desire to include Ladera and other unincorporated areas. But I, I, I do kind of feel that although, you know, they're, they're next door to us, you could make the same argument about the Sharon Heights Shopping Center and Low Park or a number of other places, you know, in Woodside that people may go to. And I, I, I view it as either, you know, the appropriate thing to do would be limited to Portola Valley. And, you know, the, the businesses that are part of the town that are subject to our rules, they're subject to our planning department and so on. Or open it more broadly. I mean, I, I, you know, choosing Los Trancos and Ladera and not saying, okay, well, maybe we should just throw it into Sam Cede's bigger pot for the whole county. That I'm a little uncomfortable with. I think the rest of the, the concept makes sense to me and I'm, I'm very supportive of it. I'd even say, you know, we could potentially either broaden the list of potential expenditures or even remove, I don't, I don't need to see receipts from these businesses. I'd be happy to, to say they could get a $5,000 check. All they have to do is apply.
I agree. I agree. I don't, I don't think we want to see receipts. I mean, we may be, you don't even have to specify that.
Exactly. So I, you know, if, if we were to say it's, it's for Portola Valley proper. And it's, the, the only problem, if it's, if you don't have to even show receipts, we may get more than 10 applicants. So.
I agree. We would use, well, the, the one other way we've seen it done is adjacent communities. So that would include, to your point, Craig, Woodside, Menlo Park, I mean.
Yeah. And then again, we may get more than 10 applicants. And that, so that's, that's why I, I think i- i- if, if we were to go to a broader community, it's a little hard to draw the lines in a way where your $80,000 is going to really make a big difference. And so if, if that's the amount, I'd rather focus it in town and reduce the, reduce the burden essentially, make it easier for everybody to get it if they need it.
Um, I could, I could argue that we, sorry, Mary Ann, I'll call you in a second. I, I could argue just to Craig's last point, that we could, we could extend it to our sphere of influence, which would be Los Trancos Woods and Ladera. That wouldn't include Sharon Heights, I don't think. I think that is Menlo Park or well.
It's not, yeah, it's not, they're definitely not in our sphere.
County, but it's not our sphere of influence. I mean, that'd be one way of differentiating them. And I, I mean, you know, I use Ladera. I think a lot of us do use Ladera. It's, I, I, I understand your point, but if you limit to Portola Valley, I don't think we'd spend anywhere near 80,000. I feel like there's just not that many businesses. I'd love to help them, but there's not, not very many of them. Mary Ann, I want you to go ahead.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I feel really strongly that it should just be Portola Valley proper. Isn't this coming from our general fund? This is taxpayer money. Portola Valley proper taxpayer money, right?
Yeah.
I think it should stay here. I think it's cleaner. I mean, you could, if, if we have a whole lot left, I'd be willing to think about it then. But at least right now, I'd say Portola Valley proper. I think we should do it. I think things are not going to get better.
Well, I think you have a good idea, Mary Ann, and that we could have a, we could have our own phase two if we need to. Meaning if we, if we don't use up all the funds, we can come back and readdress it, you know? Again, because it isn't going to be getting better anytime soon in a material way for a number of these tenants. And you know, whatever we can do. Whatever we can do to help them. So do we want to go back then to the full 80,000, just in case we had more, more here?
I'd say let's go to the 80,000. I think, I think, you know, the real question is if we, if we expand and we say we don't need to see receipts, you can just apply for a $5,000 grant. Then what number of applicants do we think we would get? And at $80,000, we have room for 16. I don't know that we'd have a lot more than 16 because I keep the requirement that they have to have a retail presence. And I don't know that we have more than 16. I, I think that, you know, removing the requirement of what the money has to be spent on, restricting it to Portola Valley and putting it up to 80 grand and see what happens.
I will play devil's advocate one more time for Ladera, just because I understand the point about it being, not being, about it being cleaner. I will just argue that a lot of our residents use and sort of rely on certain Ladera businesses and that it's, it's, it's our taxpayer money, but they, it's benefiting our citizens in my, in my opinion, but I will be happy to hear discussion on that. Uh, we have one public comment. Oh, Jeremy, did you want?
Yeah, just, uh, I, I think that, um, and Cara and I were just texting a little bit offline here. And one of the things that I think, uh, you know, not showing receipts is fine, but showing need is important as part of an application process. It's not just sending somebody $5,000. So.
I agree, but it could be a statement saying we have a need. I don't think we need to have them prove in any substantive tax returns, you know?
Right. No, we were not suggesting that through the chair, but, um, you know, there's probably something a little bit more than saying you've got need, but something less than here's the tax.
Yeah, I think.
I've worked with this directly with other, in other places, and what we've asked for is show us your 2019 receipts for the same time period versus your 2020 receipts. So it's really a demonstration of the revenue. You know. A complete decline in revenue. And that's been a pretty, that's been a pretty good.
Yeah.
Way to, to get an idea of where, how bad it is.
David, go ahead. You've been waiting.
Sure. Hopefully you can hear me now.
Yes.
Actually, what I was going to say is pretty much what Craig said. I thought we should want to hand out the money a little more generously than just making sure it was people buying masks or whatever. So I'm totally supportive of it. And I think that'd be great to support our business.
Thank you, David.
So through the chair, I, I think what uh, next step would be Ann and I getting together to give this a little meat and then bringing it back at the next council meeting. So we can approve an application process and get the word out. Does that sound reasonable?
It does. And, and for the record, if you want to start with Portola Valley and consider expanding beyond that, I'm fine with that too.
Do we want to wait through the chair? I mean, I'm, I'm fine if you all want us to move forward based on what we've just decided. I mean, in a sense that if Cara is, and Jeremy and I can come up with an application and just, you know.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we need to wait, I guess is what I'm thinking.
I, I'd be happy to, yeah, I, I, I think I'd be fine with you guys moving ahead. I just, just to get it going. I don't want to, I don't want to hold you guys up for a month, just to try.
But that's what I'm worried about a little bit.
Yeah. So, so what I'd suggest then is we authorize the town manager to work with you to, and, and grant him the authority to put this program in place.
As checked by Cara.
Yes.
Do you want it, do we want to? Do you want to limit him to the first 50 or do you want to go to just say they can do it to the full 80 if?
I would go to 80.
Okay.
Um, I think we should go to 80. I agree.
Okay, okay. It's, I think we need a motion for that.
I'm moved.
Okay. Everybody understanding what's going on here? Okay. Uh, any other discussion on this? Any public comments on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I will, uh, any further council discussion? Uh, if not, I will take a, we'll take a roll call vote, Sharon.
Councilmember Winker.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Alves.
Aye.
Thank you all.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 12, extension of our local emergency in response to COVID. Jeremy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Alves.
Well, uh, hold on, I, sorry, there's a comment in the chat box from Judith Murphy. Uh, I think Portola Valley tax money should be restricted to Portola Valley businesses. If little used, add sphere of influence. Thanks, which is where we landed. Thank you, Judy. Okay, Jeremy.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, I, I think that it's a straightforward, um, staff report. What I'd like to expand on a little bit, and Cara can help me here, is just reminding the council of what's already happened under emergency orders. So that there's some sense of what things may be extended, what things need to be re-upped and the like. So I first want to start with the first emergency order. It authorized, um, the town manager to issue emergency orders or regulations, including those to ensure the health and wellbeing of the public and mitigate the effects of the local emergencies. So that's, but the extension of the order would preserve that. It would preserve, uh, the mayor and the vice mayor to approve a warrant list on behalf of the council if that's necessary. Um, so far that has not been necessary. It also appoints a second subcommittee of council members, Wangard and Hughes, to provide input on certain financial and expenditure issues, which has been ongoing. So that would continue. The, um, then there were, uh, three emergency orders that I issued in my capacity as town manager, um, that one has been rescinded. So this was the suspension of normal planning and building activities. That was the first order, and then that's been rescinded with the third order. We have kept in place the second order, which is parking restrictions of Windy Hill, but we're not obviously enforcing that right now. We, I thought to keep that in place just in case things did change. Two other orders that, uh, the council put in place that were based off the local emergency orders, the eviction moratorium order for, um, commercial and then the CUP ordinance amendment. Um, and I may defer to Cara here a little bit to explain the eviction moratorium because it's a little, it's a little confusing to follow. Um, and I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with this. Cara, can you describe the, that order and where it is right now?
Sure. The, um, as you recall, the has, um, a residential eviction moratorium that provides protection countywide. Then the county also adopted a commercial eviction moratorium, which only applied to um, unincorporated county. After that action, many cities, um, who wanted to provide, um, commercial eviction protection, adopted a similar ordinance applying just to their jurisdictions. Portola Valley did that and we have, um, an existing ordinance, urgency ordinance that, um, has two protections. One protection is that it prohibits any evictions in the commercial arena for a certain time period. And that, um, expired on, um, May 31st. And so that, that eviction, um, protection expired May 31st. But then there's a second protection and that is, is that if a, a commercial tenant exercises its ability to, um, defer rent during, um, the anytime before May 31st, then they have, um, the ability to pay that rent uh, later. And the ordinance sets forth, um, a process for delaying that up to 180 days after it, it expires. And so that period of protection is still in place. However, the eviction protection, um, has lapsed because the, the date of, of that has lapsed. The reason why it's a little confusing is that we were not completely lined up with the county because the county ordinance also expired, um, on May 31st. But the county then extended it for 30 days. So, um, the county, um, eviction protection piece expired on June 30th. So that piece has, has since expired in the county as well as, um, in the town. It's just the town's, uh, uh, protection expired a month earlier. So I hope that's, I hope that's clear. If there are any questions, happy to answer them.
Craig, go ahead.
So Cara, all of the, all of those expirations and the 180 days as well as the, or as well as the, uh, being able to trigger an eviction, those were all tied to May 31st, not to the emergency order or tied to the emergency? I, I had thought part of it was tied in some way to the emergency and that if we extended the emergency order, it would extend at least one of those durations, but I don't recall which.
Right. So the, uh, yes, I went back and looked at the wording of the ordinance and it's a, it's a little unclear because there's one section of the ordinance that does talk about, um, tying it to, um, the duration of the local emergency.
Right.
Um, but then there's another piece that's, that says that the eviction protection expires May 31st. And so the way to reconcile those two pieces is I think that the intent there and, and this was kind of the construct that the county had adopted was that if the emergency, um, expired earlier, then there wouldn't be that protection. But in any, but if it, as long as the emergency was in effect, then the protection would go through, uh, May 31st.
Got it. So it's the earlier of the emergency expiring or May 31st, not the latter of.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Here's one other piece to all of this, and that is, is that there still is some protection at the state level. And that is, um, actually going to expire, uh, July 28th. So we're expecting the governor to take some action in the next few days. And that, it's, it's a limited protection at the state level. It protects, um, against enforcement of evictions. So you can still file a lawsuit for eviction, but you just can't enforce the judgment. So a sheriff will not come and evict a tenant. As far as filing the lawsuit for eviction, though, there's also another, uh, layer of protection and that's by the judicial council. Um, and so the judicial council has said that there shall be no, um, filing of unlawful detainers. And that order was issued on April 6th. And, um, it goes until 90 days after the state emergency is dissolved or, um, this judicial council repeals its order. So we have this patchwork of regulations in place. Um, for the most part, there is some protection. Um, also, as you know, the legislature is considering some additional protection as well. And then I guess finally, just to complete this whole picture, um, yesterday, the board of supervisors extended the residential eviction, um, moratorium and that, um, applies as, as I mentioned before, countywide.
So, uh, thank you, Cara. I appreciate it. That's the framework that we're operating in. So there's, you know, particularly as it relates to the initial order, there's some, um, authorities that the town manager has that would continue. And I think that's the primary, uh, the primary issue or the primary set of, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? That would be kept in place.
Jeremy, you'd also mentioned the CUP order, but didn't, didn't give the details there. That, that one continues as long as we have the emergency plus, I forget, three or six months or something.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Other questions? Okay. So the question in front of us is, are we, do we want to, suggesting that we expand, extend this for another 60 days? Is there any public comment on this question? I do not see any. Anyone wanted to, who wants to start a discussion or, or make a motion?
He'd happy to make a motion.
I think it's entirely appropriate and, you know, we're limited to a max of 60 days. Otherwise I'd say we should accept this even longer, but, um, 60 it is.
Okay. So Mary Ann moved. Craig was out of the second or?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion?
I wish we didn't have to do it, but we do.
Agreed and agreed. Okay. Uh, Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Winker.
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Mayor Alves.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Uh, we'll take a five-minute break and come back for, uh, liaison reports. Start recording again. I'll just remind everyone, we do have a closed session item after this, so, uh, if we could try to get through the liaison reports and, uh, and this digests fairly quickly. Liaison reports, uh, Ann, do you want to start?
Okay. We are back. July 13th, ASCC meeting. There were two major items for discussion in that, um, evening agenda. The first was 319 Corte Madera, the brown property. And this was for a second story addition, new landscaping, site improvements. And then exception to a floor area greater than 80%, 85% of the total floor area. It was well received by the entire ASCC, um, because they're not, it's, it's, as you know, in Corte Madera, it's near you, Jeff, I think, right? Probably right around the corner.
Yep.
And apparently their, their design is one that's not changing the roof line. They're adding something sort of in the back at a higher level. Um, and everybody was very excited about the design. Thought it was very tasteful. There were some minor discussions of lighting, but it basically sailed through. So on to the next. This one has a much more tragic component to it. This is 138 Goya, the Gambier's property. And that one was actually quite an extraordinary, extraordinary. I hadn't heard an ASCC meeting like that probably since I've been doing liaison. There were so many neighbors who were in support of the family and of the efforts they've made to design this in a way. But obviously one very unhappy neighbor at 148, I guess. So it's 138 verse 148. Who had his attorney, he spoke and, but it was a very, the best way to describe it was extremely poignant, but very factual. Most of the commissioners, you know, the, the neighbor was arguing that it was obstructing his views, but when you heard the architect talk about that these views had changed from originally Hoover Tower to the Dunbarton Bridge to, you know, it just was moving with, with the property adjustments. It was, again, it was incredibly telling. And in the end, basically the, the group and it came, it was about a two-hour discussion. They came back to say, and Greg Monk submitted a letter. I mean, it was a who's who of, um, a lot of the town who was, who was weighing in on this. They basically came back and said, with a few minor tweaks to try and do what you can to accommodate it, it, it at all possible. And I didn't get the sense that would have been a lot. We think it's a great and sensible design, so please move forward. But as some of you may know, over the weekend, Dr. Gambier, and they're both doctors, but Mr. Gambier died of a heart attack.
I didn't know that. Oh.
Yeah. So it, it, it's heartbreaking from the perspective that we don't know what'll happen, obviously, here going forward, but it was just a tragic turn of events is the best.
And I, I died, I don't know if you guys know, but they lost their only child in, um, I think it was May of 2015, because I lost my child in December of 2015. So that's why we wrote so well.
I knew that part. I didn't know about the, I didn't know about Arun dying.
Yeah, he died over the weekend of a heart attack. So anyway, it just, it's another reminder of how quickly things change is the best, most optimistic way you can say it. But so that was the meeting. Um, and then to a slightly more business-like, um, we had the, the finance committee meeting that Jeremy gave some of those and that was a lively discussion. That's Jeremy will attest. Some of our members in that committee, as you know, have very strong opinions and it's, it's, it's one of the, I love that about that committee and they're very, they're very smart. They know an awful lot. And as he mentioned, there was a very robust discussion of the, how much to pay down on our unfunded pension liability. 1.19, $1,119,000 is a lot of money today. And we'll be talking about that at our level, but I think that's what's going to come from the committee. There's, you know, certainly a very, there was a big argument put forward relative to, you know, how much money we have. And I think you've, those of you who are familiar with who, the committee would know where that was coming from and why it was important to pay it down, because we could pay it down and we shouldn't keep taxpayers' money. But that said, I pointed out in the discussion that the numbers that were being bandied around really didn't reflect, we're completely accurate because they were reflecting restricted funds, which are, make up the majority of our, our cash balances. So again, it'll be a robust discussion and, and we can take it from there. But I so appreciate their thinking and, you know, all the issues that they consider. Then we were talking again about, and so then there was a discussion of that funding and that was equally robust with some disagreement between the, not disagreement, but some friendly debate amongst the committee members themselves about how, how to fund that. There was one argument to fund it all in one lump sum, and then there was one for quarterly installments. And again, I'm not sure which recommendation will come our way, but we can have the similar discussion at the time it arrives to our committee. And then we will be revisiting, again, as we mentioned, some of the, the quarterly investment approach. I think there was another argument put forward to take even more money if possible. And to, because our, our funds have outperformed both LAF and, what's the, oh, my brain just went, Lathco. So the two, so the county fund, excuse me, LAF and the county fund. So we've been outperforming them pretty significantly, and there was a pretty robust discussion of increasing our allocation. So it was a very interesting meeting. All of these will come our way in the future. And as Jeremy mentioned, they will be reviewing the budget shortly. And that's all ahead, those two.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Craig, go ahead.
Sure. I, I was also at the ASCC meeting and I'd like to just let you know, it's, it's now July. So you're off the hook for ASCC for the next three months. But it was, it was an incredibly poignant meeting, I have to say, and, and learning that Arun died last weekend is just, I mean, in the context of that project that they're going through and what's happened to that family, it really is really unfortunate. So the other meeting I had was BPTS back on July 1st. Let's see, casting back my memory. So we had Andy, Sergeant Andy from the Sheriff's Office, made it to the Zoom meeting. I think that's the first time since we've been doing Zoom meetings that he managed to dial in. He called in from his desk at the Sheriff's Office, gave us an updated report on traffic. And the short version is, there are no cars on the road, so there were a few citations. So they've been, you know, they've been deliberately trying to make sure that, you know, given that there are fewer cars, people aren't speeding, that they're not doing other things that might be dangerous because of the fact that there are fewer cars on the road. But by and large, people seem to have been behaving themselves. I mean, I've heard on Portola Road outside my house here, occasionally you get somebody who's clearly zooming past, but it seems to be not as frequent as otherwise might be. They've also been leaning towards warning people rather than citing them during COVID, because, you know, obviously they don't want to be handing things back and forth between the officer and the driver as much as they can, they cannot do that. And the sense of the BPTS was that they're, they're acting appropriately there. So one area where they'd ask for a little help, and there was some public comment as well, is from one of the property owners who lives across, almost directly across from, I guess, from the Sequoias. They're a little bit down from Windy Hill. So they're towards Alpine Road from where all the, on the, on the Alpine Road end of where all the overflow parking from Windy Hill tends to accumulate. And they have a second driveway that's an emergency access there, that they've had some issues with people parking in front of as well as their main driveway where their, their sight lines are a little bit restricted. And so when people park up along the edge of the road there, it can be very problematic for them. So they've, they've asked the committee to, you know, think if there's anything further we can do to help with that when we have those busy parking days and Windy Hill's overflowing. You know, I, I've been noticing myself that people have been parking a lot down at Town Center historically. They didn't, and that was the source of a lot of the overflow parking. The, the parking on the spring downside of our Town Center parking, the gravel parking spaces there have been frequently kind of fully parked up on weekends and people walk to Windy Hill. So it's, it's not just that they're parking us across the street there. And I think our opportunities for doing much are, you know, I think a staff has been finding it's, it's just tough. It's, we've got so many more people using Windy Hill. It's just hard to deal with. So BPS will continue thinking about that and, and trying to see if they can come up with, with some solutions. Let's see. Ed updated the committee on his presentation to the council. And then that was pretty much it. Then we moved to scheduling our next meeting. And that was it. I was supposed to have a Trails Committee meeting yesterday, but I could not make it. So I'm not sure how that went. I didn't hear that there was anything particularly bad and the agenda was fairly straightforward. So I'll check with the chair and update you next time if there was anything that came out of that.
Through the chair, it sounded like it went fine, but I'll have a quick update in my report.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Craig. Mary Ann, go ahead.
Alrighty. I alluded to the Zoom meeting that John, Jeremy and I had with Captain Christina Corpus. It was a very good conversation. I think she was a little nervous because, as you can imagine, people in that field are feeling a little defensive right now. But we made it clear that we respect her and her people and have always had a great working relationship and expect to in the future. But we had questions. We did ask a lot of questions. I just want to pull out a few things that I learned. There is actually something called, where the heck is, the RIPA Act, R-I-P-A Act. And that requires all law enforcement to write down all stops. So we had the question of if, if you pull somebody over, but you don't cite them, is it recorded? Well, it is going to have to be now. And she said they're exploring how to do this, how to accurately record and report out. They're looking at technology to capture it. So that is, and they have to report race, age, gender, why they were stopped, why a person was stopped, what the outcome was. So that's just the kind of information we want to get, right? Another question that they answered, I asked her, why, why in the world at this time are the supervisors approving a million dollars in new tasers? And she said, well, there are these new tasers that don't kill you. They're much safer on the body, much, and that, these are the new tasers. So I said, well, you really should get that information out because now, okay, that makes sense. They're replacing the more lethal tasers with the less lethal tasers.
Sounds like a good sales pitch by the taser sales rep.
Yes. You could do some really good ads. She also, there was another thing. Oh. Our question in who polices the police, actually, there is a body called the California Post, and they oversee law enforcement in the states and they are connected to the DOJ. I didn't know that either. And they even have a website, post.ca.gov. She, Jeremy said that on the August 12th meeting, we're going to have this issue on the agenda. Are we? Well, okay, Jeremy said that and that if so, she'll be there. But she said she'd like to do a Zoom meeting to introduce the deputies to the community, and I think that would be great. But I will write this whole thing up. And she also said, to get the real answer on a lot of these questions, you've got to talk to Carlos Bolanos. We haven't done that yet.
Are there, there are some local police forces that have citizens oversight committees, right?
I think there, yeah, I think, what did she say?
Is it?
Jeremy?
Moving through the training manual, I know that there's a Citizens Advisory Committee on some of the training procedures for the Sheriff's Office, but it wasn't clear from the manual what exactly their involvement level is and, you know, whether, how you get on. And whether it's purely advisory or whether they actually have any teeth.
Through the, through the chair, that what, what people would think of as the kind of oversight does not exist in San Mateo County. As in other places. That's part of the conversation is whether that needs to be here.
Yes, definitely. And they've heard that one before. The CCAG meeting started off with a presentation by Josh Abrams from 21 Elements about Rena 6. I sent you all the slides and I sent you my little memo of the key points, but I'll read them for the record. It was, it was a severe, serious discussion. And Josh said, are the Rena 6 numbers for San Mateo County are going to be 2.3 times as high as Rena 5? That's the aggregate. Some cities will get numbers that are a little less. Some cities will get numbers that are a little more than 2 times 3, 2.3. There is a methodology committee that is working on this right now. I wanted, did I send you the link to that? Because it's interesting to see who's on that committee. I will run that down and send it to you. Rick Bonilla, who's a council member in San Mateo, sits on that committee as an elected. And I noticed that Carlos Romero from East Palo Alto sits on that committee, but he's representing a stakeholder group, an advocacy nonprofit. Anyway, they are, they're the ones who are doing the heavy lifting on this. And there, they say, these are the, the points that they are in agreement about. Equity is of primary importance. This is the first Rena where it's all about equity. Jobs-rich opportunity areas are defined as places with low crime, good schools, in proximity to jobs. Those places of which we would be one, might even see higher Rena numbers. In the past, affordable housing, as you know, has been located in the less desirable parts of the county. And that, they say that practice has to be changed. They may require higher Rena numbers to cities with a history of racial and economic exclusion. High hazard areas such as places with earthquake faults, fire danger, flooding histories are a concern, and Rena should not be placed in those areas. However, this will not reduce a city's Rena number, nor excuse them from planning for and building affordable housing. Rather, the housing units need to be located in other parts of the city where the danger from earthquake, fire, flooding is not as acute. And he said rezoning will probably be necessary for all the cities in the county to accommodate their increased Rena numbers, and cities should start that process as soon as possible. Okay, the next, and you know, people didn't even ask many questions.
Through the chair, I put in the chat, the website for Post that the 21 elements, housing element for members of the public.
Jeremy, as a quick procedural question, when we post things like, I think it's great that we're posting it in the chat box. Do we also, maybe we record those and put them in the digest or something, just to have a, like a little more public record of them?
So we're trying, so this, I'm glad you brought this up. There's a variety of things that we're going to be experimenting with very soon to ensure that we're capturing everything that happens at a council meeting. One example is typically if someone has sent the council a letter or an email or something, we put a physical copy of it in the back. So we're going to create a virtual version of that. We think it's literally just a website connection on our, on our.
Jeremy, one other technical comment, the, the two links that you posted were to all panelists, which is what the chat defaults to, not to all panelists and attendees. You need to resend them to all attendees as well as panelists.
Right.
The ledge report, which is always old news by the time I give it to you, this was on July 9th. The governor signed the budget with trailer bills and it had to be done by July 15, but he'd signed it. As you all know, the ledge is taking a break right now. And as you all learned today on the county call, they're starting again, was it the 27th? Well, they're, they're pretty soon going back into session and they'll be in session for five weeks. There's increased scrutiny on which bills will be advanced. Our lobbyists should have more information at the next meeting. The November ballot had been set with propositions and the CCAG has a watch on two housing bills from Senator Weiner, but I don't, I'm not sure which ones those are. Let's see what else. Then there was an item about the Cooperative Funding Agreement with the operating loan with San Mateo County Express Lanes, JPA. Really boring. I'm not going to go into it. And then my favorite, I call it COVID corner, where the board members share things they're doing in their cities related to COVID. There was a lot of people talking about what the cities are doing to help the school districts, because the school districts are really having a lot of problem now. So like Carol Motzamato in South San Francisco, she said childcare is a really hot button issue there. There isn't enough space. So they brought in the Boys and Girls Club and they're working with the school district, but it's really tough. Lisa Gochet from East Palo Alto said the churches are stepping again to provide childcare. Davina in Belmont said they're really helping to support the school board members as they struggle through this. Adam in San Carlos, Adam Rack. Yeah, such a good name. Said they've been talking with the school about using some of their closed facilities. And I just wondered, I mean, have, has the school district reached out to us about childcare or anything? Okay.
We, we've been talking to them every week and, or till the last couple of weeks.
Not an issue here?
No, and they haven't, they haven't raised it.
They haven't raised it. Yeah, and we've, they've, they've not been coming to the last couple of meetings because they're so busy trying to figure out the reopening plans. They don't have time to talk to us that much.
Changes every week. You're right. There was, now, of course, everybody is up to speed on Caltrain. So this was on July 9th and Carol, who's on the Samtrans board, came and said, there might not be a Caltrain in the fall. You know, and I don't know. I'm actually, I'm not, what was the outcome of the meeting with the Santa Clara Board of Supervisors and the San Francisco Board of Supervisors? Do you know, Jeremy? Did they come to an agreement?
As far as I know, they did not come to an agreement. They weren't supportive. That was the last I read, but that was a couple of days old.
Oh, and then, oh, this is a good one. For those of us who go to Council of Cities. Sue Vodalas wants to do a Council of Cities by Zoom. Okay.
Is that a BYO?
Yeah, that's what they said. That, yeah. Isn't that strange? Yeah, okay.
They're not going to deliver, Anne. Sorry.
Yeah, now everybody can go. It'll be easy. The Willow Road 101 interchange, and I don't know if you remember, but I gave a little speech at that ribbon cutting, was awarded the interchange project of the year. And then Fizzler Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District met. There was a discussion about the rates for the Water Pollution Control Services for Flood Zones 1 countywide and 2 Pacifica. That's the stormwater stuff. I guess now everything's gotten shifted over to the, the Fizzler District from where it was in the county. Or I can't remember if it was in the county or CCAG. I mean, there is such a patchwork of these agencies here. It's so tough to follow. Anyway, they talked about how they hadn't raised the rates in, since the early 90s. But I don't think they're going to do anything. Then they gave an update on the Bayfront Canal and the Atherton Channel Project. Okay, what else? Lot of detail on that, but I know you don't care.
I'm still just trying to get it processed, the interchange project of the year award.
I know.
That's got to be a fun awards night. I
Go to the convention.
Really good. Really a good one.
I want to be in the red carpet for that, yeah.
Okay, then there was a discussion about making some little ad hoc committees, as you know, you do with boards. So now there is a standing finance committee with Donna, the finance girl from Burlingame, and Lisa from East Palo Alto. There's an ad hoc strategic planning meeting. Everyone wanted to get into that. It was really something to behold. So Debbie Reddick from Path Moon Bay, Diane Papen from San Mateo, San Mateo, and Dave Pine. And then the ad hoc evaluate, evaluate the performance of the CEO. I was the only one who even wanted to do it. Okay, then, let's see. Okay, so the chair report, you know, we all had high hopes of a climate resilience leap on, but that's off the table with COVID. But we're still hoping there could be a recovery bond, because as you know, But we're still hoping there could be a recovery bond because as you know, we need to find money, right? What else? And then they've got some, there was a report on the new, they've hired two people, finance and a woman who has engineering background in climate policy. So that is that. And then JPA Express Lanes, the other startup that I'm on. Okay, this was a big meeting about the terms for the million dollar loan. Is that what it is? No, hundred million dollar loan. Geez. That the, the transit district is going to loan to the JPA and they've been negotiating for months. And they're pretty much there with everything. They brought the risk fee, which is now called the credit enhancement fee down from point oh six to point oh four. They, in the waterfall, you know, that's where people get paid. At the very bottom, it was a ninety, ten. Now it's an eighty-five, fifteen, so eighty-five to the repayment of the operating loan and the bond loan and fifteen to JPA for any lawful purpose such as equity. And what was the other thing they did? Oh, also, if we pay in, if we pay five million or more in a year, the credit enhancement fee goes down to point two five. And now there's a million that goes into equity off the top. So the only thing they're left negotiating is some language and I hope, I think they'll work that out. What else was I going to tell you? Oh, this was kind of interesting. They're talking about, what's it called? Means-based tolling discount. I asked what that was and whether they do that in LA Metro. They don't. And they said LA Metro is thinking of increasing their, their occupancy to HOV four or five. When do you ever see four or five people in a car? I know.
I used to carpool kids to soccer practice with.
Yeah, that's about the only time. And then, oh, okay. So then in the executive council report, that's Jim Hartnett and Sandy Wong. Jim gave the update on Caltrain and he, you know, you know where he is on that. This was as of July 17th. And they, it was up in the air and he basically said if they don't get this on the ballot and it doesn't get approved, there is money to get us through December and then no money. And I am a great supporter of Caltrain. I think this should go on the ballot, but I can actually understand the issues that San Francisco and Santa Clara County have about forking over all this money with absolutely no control over governance. So. Anything else? I think that was it. And then I did reference the Portola Valley Racial Justice Organizing Zoom Meeting with Kim, Lucy, Suda and John and I did it and it was a really nice, it was a really nice meeting, real smart women, great energy and some good ideas. So that, those are my articles.
Great. Thank you, Mary Ann. I, a couple of things. I talked about before, we, there was an ad hoc wildfire preparation, preparedness committee meeting yesterday. A lot of good information. The new intern Brandon is really good. I was really impressed with the report. He and some, some classmates, I guess, from Stanford put together on the, basically just kind of doing a program effectiveness assessment of the Los Trancos Woods program. I thought they were, I thought they did a great job. We've got another little more detailed description of Zone Haven. And it's how, how it could be applied here mostly kind of as a, as a planning and a decision-making tool for the fire district. You know, the, the upshot of Don's presentation, I thought, and Jeremy, correct if I'm wrong, I, you know, we've been talking about this woo-ee designation that Hillsborough pursued. And, you know, one thing that came out of his presentation is the fact, or his question and answer session is that he actually has pretty, pretty broad enforcement. I mean, he can, he can do a lot with fire code to enforce, you know, fire, you know, to basically compel residents to clear property, clear fuels off their property. Which made me feel like the, the impetus for, for us adopting a woo-ee code, which is kind of controversial, is probably less urgent than we might have thought previously. That was the one thing that came out of that for me. Jeremy, do you want to add to that or?
Yeah, I would say the other element of that is that the woo-ee code way that Don described it, it had a number of elements that may not be necessary for the town to adopt in a, you know, woo-ee code sense that instead you take the parts that you like and it's mostly building code related items. And it's, it, a lot of it aligns perfectly with what the the recommendations were from the, the committee to begin with. So he said, if you get those half a dozen or so, you're going to have all the tools you need to really move things forward. So I was really useful. The committee had lots of questions and I thought it was good, good session.
It was a great discussion. Two, two things for Peninsula Clean Energy. We have our contract in place with Sunrun and they are offering basically residential battery storage systems. They're, they're, they're sort of, they're targeting medically vulnerable people who might need, might need backup power for like a refrigerator for medication or maybe even like a, like a, you know, respirator or something. They're also targeting single-family homes in high fire or PSS areas like ours where they provide a battery. You get a discount for, in exchange for basically allowing Peninsula Clean Energy to use it as part of their resource adequacy requirements, which is a complicated regulatory requirement we have. The point is it's an opportunity to get some really, some, some more affordable battery systems installed locally so that people aren't going out and putting in diesel generators. So they're about to start, start promoting it. I will be promoting it. If, if somebody's thinking about looking for backup power for PSS and fire season, you know, send them to me or send them to Peninsula Clean Energy because they're ready to start trying to, love to see more batteries out here. The other is, is a, you know, basically our task force on, I'll get you in a second, Mary Ann. There's a task force on just all electric homes. We've got a group that's trying to, you know, we're trying to extend both reach codes and just design help in terms of people designing either, you know, retrofits or new, new residential buildings with all electric supplier, you know, just fully electric. Trying to reach that, trying to provide tools for designers for that and just trying to promote more awareness of that. Those are the two big things where, that came out that I sort of thought were useful locally. Mary Ann, go ahead.
Why did you choose Sunrun?
We did an RFP starting last November and Sunrun was one of the, there's two companies that ended up being selected. Sunrun was one of them and I cannot remember the name of the other one that we have not yet closed a contract with. They just, between their capabilities and what they were offering in terms of the, the functions of the batteries and their pricing, they were, they've ended up being one of the most competitive respondents.
Thank you.
Yep. That's all I have. So Jeremy, do you have a report?
Yeah, a variety of small items. I had a very good introductory conversation with the new executive director at the Sequoia, his name, Rob Hayes. I am very much looking forward to working with him. Seems like very practical and a very accessible person. I am hoping to talk to him tomorrow because I was curious on his thoughts on the continued closure of the Sequoia Trail, which was talked about a bit at Trails. Unfortunately, he had, Rob had not had enough time to talk to his folks prior to that meeting. So I will reach out to him again tomorrow. Many of you heard that over the weekend, we had a pop-up Little League baseball game at Ford Field. We don't know who it was. Our local Little League, what's Todd's title?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, thank you. Went out to figure out who it was, but wasn't able to determine that. I'm disappointed that this occurred and have asked staff to place on Ford Field around second play, second base, a large log that would be very difficult to move. And we're also altering our irrigation times to those times where people will be out there. So hopefully that'll be enough to keep people off the fields. Again, I don't like having to do these things or ask staff to do it, but unfortunately I think it's the right decision. Mentioned earlier that we, I brought on board an intern. They, he goes by they/them pronouns. They, they are Brandon. Brandon just left Stanford University, just graduated and he, they will be working on a few things for us. Climate Action Plan. I've also asked they to review all of the work that the cities in San Mateo County are doing around race and equity and he's going to have a great portfolio of all of that work for the subcommittee. And there's a few other items he's really interested in as well. So I'm excited to have them on board. I.
Scheduled, I just wanted, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to apologize. I was, I was using the wrong pronouns for Brandon.
No, no, you didn't, you didn't.
Correct myself from the forward, yeah.
No, and he's, he's been very gracious about it as well. So I appreciated Brandon's approach. I met, scheduled a meeting with the new chair and vice chair of the Library JPA with the vice chair of the operations committee, myself. I'm the operations committee chair. It's Ruben Hallibur from Millbrae and Sarah McDowell from San Carlos. We had a great discussion for about 20 minutes and got a sense of the, the issues that they're really interested in. So we agreed to meet on a regular basis just to talk about things that are coming on the agenda. I had a meeting with PG&E representatives to understand more about a microgrid program that they're initiating. It's not to actually build them, but it's to help with the connections between systems that would be put in place and a municipality. So hoping to learn more about that in the coming weeks and I think I'll be engaging Jeff on that. I sent an email today to my, to essentially the local representative lobbyist for the cellphone community. They, and it's for those who own those sites where the cellphone infrastructure is Crown Castle is the big one. And I asked them, what are their plans to begin installing new battery, new backup systems in town based on the CPUC guidance that there must be 72 hours of backup power? I indicated in my email that I was certainly interested in seeing them look at battery as an, as an alternative. ICC'd the chair of our EPC, the chief at the fire district and the sheriff's office too. So they agreed to get back to me. So I'm excited about that. I've also started some conversations around virtual EOCs, emergency operations centers. This came out of a comment that Mary Ann made during the mayor's meeting a couple of days ago. I appreciated her thoughts on, you know, what is the future of emergency operations looks like if, if there aren't as many staff around? So I've started to talk to some organizations to see what that looks like, if there are models that work. And I mentioned earlier the Plan B area meeting that I was on. So their Plan B area, the MTC and A-BAG are soliciting input from local stakeholders on their new blueprint or revised blueprint. It actually increased the amount of housing in San Mateo County. So we'll see where that goes. That's my report. Thank you.
On the, on the battery backups for cell phones, does that apply to the microcell towers too, or just the bigger towers?
I do not believe it applies to the micro systems, but let me find out for you.
And, and if it does apply to the microcells, does that allow them to go beyond the 27 cubic feet? And, you know, do 27 cubic feet plus battery plus who knows, you know, extra wires and everything else?
Controls, yeah. I'll let you know. Thank you, Craig. That's a question.
Any other questions on Jeremy's report? Okay, then we're on to the digest for June 25th. Anything to pull? Okay, July 2nd. Comments or anything to pull? July 9th? July 17th? Oh, Jeremy, did you have a comment about trails and paths? We're going to.
Just that I was speaking to the Sequoia's ED about.
Oh, okay, sorry. Remember you mentioned, okay, okay. If there's nothing else anyone wants to pull from those, then we are done with our open session. Thank you all. And Jeremy, remind me, I guess we're, I guess everyone except Sharon will move to the closed session.
Kara also will not be moving.
Sorry. Kara's not, okay.
Right.
All right.
I'm recused from this matter.
Oh, right, right, right. Is, is Greg joining us or?
Uh, no.
Okay, just by myself. Okay, okay. Then thank you to the public. Thank you to Sharon and Kara. And we will talk to you soon. And I guess we'll move on to the closed session then.
Good night, Sharon and Kara.
Good night. Night, Kara.
Good night.